Those that are coming in virtually. Yes, thank you. Welcome to the Toronto and East York Committee of Adjustment. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act as amended, this meeting of Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. So what is it that committee does? We can consider applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property. We can give permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses. And we give consent to sever property to create new laws. Before we go further in terms of committees and procedures, we want to acknowledge that we're meeting on the land of the traditional territory of many nations, including Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabak, the Chipewa, the Hudasheen, and the Wendak peoples, and it's now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. I have some lengthy introductory remarks, but they're important about the process here and how we'll proceed. I'm sure many of you know that Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. These meetings are also being streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch us on YouTube. Those who participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and they have the option of participating via video or audio only. All the virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you'll be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. And we ask that you mute your devices until your particular matter comes up in the agenda. Persons participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During that time, your camera will be enabled. It will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At other times, your video will be disabled, and you'll be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use Share Screen or any other panelist control. Hosts will remove you if you don't respect that instruction. Getting a copy of today's decision of the committees today. People attending today who want to receive a copy of the decision of committee must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. Rights of appeal. If you don't agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. And appeal instructions are sent out at the bottom of the decision of committee. All right, more about our hearing procedure this morning and this afternoon. I'll call each item in the order listed in the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. So the committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for discussion and a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I'll comment when you are reaching that five-minute limit. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. So when addressing committee, would you please state your name and address? Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters that are outlined in your application. So just in terms of order, the applicant or agent will proceed first and make a presentation to committee on the application. Again, as mentioned, the committee may not entertain revisions to the proposals if the revisions had brought it before us today. Committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Again, committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they've finished their presentation. When all the speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. That will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will then be taken into committee for a discussion and for a decision. All right, again, continuing with procedural matters. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any minutes from past meetings to be confirmed?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and panel members. There are minutes from the August twenty-eighth, 2024, and the September fourth, 2024 minutes that have been confirmed and are ready for adoption today.
Can I have a motion then, please, to put forward and adopt these minutes? Yes, Mr. Gosch. Is it a secondary? Sorry, Mr. Gosch.
Oh, no, I was just making sure my mic is on. Yes, I moved to adopt the minutes. Second.
All right. Is it business net? Seconds, all in favor then? Yes, I carried unanimously, Deputy Secretary Treasurer. Members, and I should ask staff as well, are there any declarations of interest to be made this morning? Any conflict of interest with respect to any item on this morning's agenda?
Through the chair, see none.
Right, okay, good. Are there any closed files to be dealt with this particular meeting?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There are no files to be closed or withdrawn this morning.
Thank you, that's very helpful. And finally, just in terms of our procedural matters, with respect to the morning agenda, are there any applications for deferral of items before us?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I see one deferral request for this morning, which is an automatic deferral request due to lack of signage posting. That is item number six. Municipal address of twelve hundred Dundas Street West, file number A zero five eight two slash two four T E Y. We do have the agent on the line.
All right, good morning. Yes, the agent for twelve hundred Dundas Street West. Would you please identify yourself?
Yep, my name is Joey Kwong. I'm the planner on this file, and address is three Church Street.
Thank you very much. So we understand there was perhaps a hiccup or a problem with notice, and it's our understanding now that you're asking that this matter be deferred to a later meeting?
Yes, that's correct. The sign's been posted now, and we're requesting a deferral of this matter.
Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, is there anyone else who wants to speak to this matter?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There are no registered speakers for this item.
All right, that's helpful. Members, it's a notice issue, so I think that's fundamental, should be done. Could we have a motion to defer this item, please? All right, Mr. Gosch. All right. Is it a secondary, please? Yes. All right, all in favor, if you should vote on that motion? All right, thank you very much. Your item's been deferred to a later meeting of Committee of Adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving to our agenda. First item then concerns a property at twenty-two Maynard Avenue. And in connection with this property, the city has materials on file which I'm going to, I'm just going to set out quite a number with respect to this particular application. Here's the purpose at twenty-two Maynard. To alter the existing three-story apartment building by constructing a front one-story vestibule and a complete four-story addition. There'll be a total of forty-five residential dwelling units on this lot. Committee has before it the following communications and material: a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations; covering letter from Robert Joseph as agent; arborist report; surveyor's report; a primary locate report; and we have email correspondence, again, from Robert Walter Joseph as agent; and we also have communication from assistant planner here in community planning. We have the presentation materials from Mr. Walter Joseph that were received September twelfth. We have an application to injure or remove trees. We have a letter concerning exemption of fees by a person who's the director of the Housing Secretary at City of Toronto. We have a site-specific bylaw to consider, four seven three ninety-three, that affects the subject property. Finally, we have email correspondence from the Senior Project Manager of Development and Planning Transportation Services. And we have just a staff report from MetroLinks. All right, in opposition, we understand we have correspondence from a June Henry. There was no address but a letter of communication of September tenth. Also from Henry Pringle, no address, September tenth. And from Chris and Jackie Dale, fourteen Maynard Avenue. That was received September eleventh. All right, so that's quite a bit of material. I think then if we can...
Through you, Mr. Chair. There are no registered speakers for this item, and we have the agent on the line.
Very good, very good. Hello, good morning. Yes, could you identify yourself and also give us your municipal address, please?
Good morning, and it's Kevin Barton with LGA Architectural Partners, three Penn Spadina Avenue, representing the neighborhood land trust. On this application, and with me is Robert Walter Joseph with Plaid and Key Planning Associates.
Yes, I just asked you just to speak up a little bit, just so we hear you better.
Okay. With LGA Architectural Partners, three Penn Spadina Avenue, representing the neighborhood land trust, along with Robert Walter Joseph of Plaid and Key Planning Associates, also of three Penn Spadina Avenue.
All right, thank you. I'd ask you to outline for committee the nature of your application and your submissions as to why a minor variance should be granted as you have applied for.
Thank you. So I'm Robert Walter Joseph, I'm the planner with Plaid and Key Planning Associates. Just confirming that you can hear me?
Yes, it's a little bit garbled.
I will speak slowly and loud. So we represent the owner, the Parkdale Neighborhood Land Trust. P N L T acquired the property in two thousand twenty-one to preserve at-risk affordable housing on the site. In 2022, the City of Toronto's Mura program funded the opposition future plans for expansion and accessibility improvements. Our typical land trust and city people at center signed a social housing and rental supplement agreement with the city for the existing thirty-six units, which are just non-property. And in December of 2023, City Council approved some initial open-door incentives, fees and tax exemptions in support of the project. So I'll speak briefly to what the N L T intends with this project and mostly to the application in any context. It is helpful. The proposed retrofit at this time focuses on the preservation of long-term affordable housing, the existing thirty-six units on the property, an expansion of affordable housing by adding nine new units through an additional one-story, enhancing accessibility. There is a proposal to provide a new elevator and an accessible entry at grade. And other retrofits not entirely associated with this variance application are to improve the environment performance of the building through energy efficiency retrofit to lower operational costs. The building does provide affordable housing currently through the agreement with the city. Rents must be no more than ninety percent AMR, and the average rents in the building as a whole must not exceed eighty percent of average market rent. The expansion through the nine additional agents will train up residents off the city's housing list, and those residents will be RTI qualified. Maynard Avenue currently has a very varied building form, including taller buildings, rooming houses located on Maynard itself. This is reflective of Parkdale's housing diversity overall. Within the wider neighborhood, Jameson has some higher-form apartment buildings, as does Dalm, which is just to the west. And then on Maynard, directly across the street from our location, which is on the west side, it's on the east side, there's an existing eleven-story. And then at the top of the street, at Leopold and Maynard, there's an existing eight-story multi-unit building there as well. The property, the zoning for the property currently operates under a site-specific zoning bylaw. This building was built in the nineteen seventies. The bylaw itself comes in around nineteen ninety-three, which recognizes the existing thirty-six unit building, as well as its current parking supply, seventeen spaces.
I'll just jump in on that point. So at that point, the site-specific bylaw, that was allowing thirty-six residential units?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And as well as the building footprint. So that includes a fairly substantial depth relative to the base come that we have in our 2013 bylaw. That is through the site-specific that's there. Summary of the variances are associated with the additional story. So the additional unit count's coming up from thirty-six to forty-five units, recognizing the depth of the building. As I mentioned, this is largely within the existing footprint. So that's substantial from the base bylaw, but is already reflected in the site-specific bylaw itself, and the parking's fixable, remaining at seventeen spaces. Currently, in the rear yard, the rear yard is improved and does operate as an amenity area. The residents operate a garden in the rear yard, and they have, there's a barbecue area as well. So that space will remain. Then just commenting about the addition, the expansion of building footprint towards the front property line. This is to accommodate the new elevator up to the fourth floor, which will also extend accessible access to all existing units and entrance vestibule, which will provide at-grade access, so acceptable access into the building visible. So that entrance vestibule feature, which you can see right at the front property line, is there. And there's an existing sort of boulevard, so there's a separation of, I think, just under five meters or so, the existing curve of Maynard. So the variance lines with the official plan is open by law while addressing community needs for affordable housing and accessibility. And we believe this proposal enhances the utility and livability of the property without any negative impacts to the neighborhood as a whole. The design itself was intended to fit the surrounding context. We believe it does so, and we request the committee's support in granting the variances to move forward with this project. I thank you for your time this morning.
All right, thank you. Just looking at some of the variances. So there's no internal amenity space. What you're saying, there is room in the backyard, and tenants can either socialize there or barbecue. Is that right?
That's correct. This is something we, in conversation with community planning as well, just to highlight the requirement that that was satisfied with the community plan.
All right, thank you, members of committee, for questions, please.
Yeah, my question was along that same line, because looking at your plans, I did notice that landscaped area at the back. And maybe you can give some, was there any rationale as to why that wasn't considered an amenity area?
Specifically, there was, there are requirements in the bylaw of the location of amenity area relative to internal amenity space. So we had originally submitted for our ZAP that was identified. To clear a conversation with community planning. It didn't sort of persist as a zoning issue. So we believe that the issue was satisfied. We continue to work with the tenants on that, who are, who have issues for their needs. So some of the tenants do handle the planting in the municipal gardens. There's the indoor sitting area and dining area that will look to enhance. At the same time, we can't make the backyard fully accessible given the layout of the main building, but we're looking at making them more accessible. So that's down in the rear yard, we're looking at trying to.
Oh, so I see. So it didn't meet accessibility requirements for it to be considered an official amenity space?
Yeah, so we're just trying to, we're going to be improving it, but it's technicality that is not. And yeah, in the talk with community planning, any move to try to get interior amenity space would be a loss of units. And I think they kind of conceded that it not, wouldn't be their intent to try to force that onto an existing property that has not existed.
The other variance that I'd like some clarification on is variance eight about the garbage. Where is the waste and recyclable material now? And where are you planning on having it?
Yeah, so that's in the front yard, the waste collection pickup. As it exists now, it's to the right of the existing entry there. And what we've done is created in our proposed site plan and then fenced enclosure to the south of the entry. Again, not fully enclosed, but within a fenced enclosure. And that seemed, again, through community planning, I think Transportation Commons as well kind of supported that solution. Again, nowhere to really put inboard into the buildings. We provided it there and noted a fenced enclosure, metal fenced enclosure. So it's kind of kept even and...
When you say fenced enclosure, is that just on the sides? Or is there some sort of protection on top as well? Because one of the issues with waste outside is smell. But the other issue, which I don't think can be really mitigated without enclosing it, but the other is animals? And so maybe you can, is it just a fence around the sides?
Currently, a fence around on the side, but also up against the existing porch, the raised ground floor porch, the front door access. It could be easily expanded to have a roof enclosure to it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the other members at all? All right, thank you, sir. Just ask you to stand by, and I just need to go to Deputy Secretary. No further, no registered speakers on this, is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct. No registered speakers.
All right, members, and I think we'll take it in amongst ourselves for a discussion and a motion. Yes, Mr. Gosch, yes.
Sure, happy to lead off the discussion. I think on the whole, this is a highly meritorious application. It's not adding, the additional story is an extremely limited intervention given the other apartment buildings across the street. It's affordable housing. There's the planning fee exemption from the Housing Secretariat. I think the issues that I touched on are the ones that give me a little pause. It would be nice to see the amenity space be an actually accessible one and therefore not require those variances. And I also think that the garbage issue was raised by one of the letters in opposition, so I thought it was worth raising that as well. On the whole, I think to, you know, enable additional affordable units and also, I think importantly, making the ones that are there accessible, because right now it's a stair-only building, and they're adding an elevator. So I find it supportable.
Yes, thank you.
I agree with my colleague. I find the merits of the application would lend me to support the variances. And I commend the organization for making the building more accessible, and I'll be happy to support this application and the variance applied for.
I'll take that as a motion and a secondary, excuse me, Nazila, Nazila, please.
Yes, I'll just, I approve. Just want to add one more thing, that MetroLinks have a warning clause. Would like to add that if it's, if you accept.
Sure.
From the amendment, it's the third one, but...
I was gonna say, probably generally don't add like their warning clauses. They sometimes ask for environmental easements, and we have some difficulties with those as well. But by any event, you've raised it, so let's add that then as a condition matter. All right. The, sorry, the application then with that additional condition, I see no urban forestry here. So all in favor of that application put forward, all right? It is passed, the three members here. All right, agent, etc., thank you. The, the, sorry. Lady has approved the application. And yes, good to see, you know, more affordable units being brought on here. I think that's a very significant step. So thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to item two. The address is three seventy-four Lippincott Street, and the ward is University of Rosedale. As chair, I'm going to read out the materials, etc., and communications that have come in for this particular application. Here's the purpose. To construct a new two-story ancillary building containing a one-car garage on the ground level, storage use on the second level, and a front cantilevered green roof in the rear yard, abutting of the laneway. There'll be a total of one residential unit within the main house on this lot. Committee has the following communications: a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations; four photographs of the subject property; a covering letter from Sean Galbraith as agent. Then in terms of commuting agencies, etc., we have correspondence from transportation engineering, and we have a staff report from the TTC. All right. All right, then, if we could have come to the mic, come to the fore, the agent for this application at three seventy-four Lippincott Street?
Through the chair, we have the agent on the line and no registered speakers for this item.
Hopefully no, thank you very much. All right, would the applicant or agent please identify themselves and give us your municipal address as well?
Good morning, Sean Galbraith, planner here on behalf of the application, eighteen King Street East, Suite fourteen hundred.
Thanks very much. All right, just get to your item here. So Sean, I think we'd like here just, you know, a concise version of your application and what it is that you're seeking and asking committee to do.
So the owners are looking to construct a new two-story garage. It will not have living space above, simply to provide some additional storage. The additional space allows for it to be accessed via a stair versus a ladder. The owners are getting a little bit, you know, up there in age, and ladders aren't the easiest to use. The height of it is less than would be permitted as a laneway suite, and the lane is already featuring some notable developments. Across from them is the B Street, a large mid-rise condo building, and there are other two-story structures along the lane. So this is entirely in keeping with the character of the lane. And they're also adding a partial green roof on top of it to help with water retention, even though there's... The footprint of the building doesn't exceed what would be permitted as a laneway suite either. I think it's a fairly straightforward application, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So it's not a laneway suite, there's no residential part of the ancillary building, right? So it's just, there's just one unit then? I'm sorry.
Apologies, go ahead.
So it's sort of like a main house then, is just one residential or family unit then on this property?
Yep, this is purely for storage. They've submitted a declaration of use for... They've submitted a declaration of use form to confirm that, that there would be no residential use of there.
Helpful to, helpful to know. Members, questions? Mr. Gosh, yes?
Yeah, just one question on, on the last thing you mentioned about it being the same footprint as what would be allowed for a laneway house. And I, I don't think that this really affects how I view the application, but I just want to have the facts as to it. Does it also meet the angular planes that would apply to a laneway suite?
I haven't analyzed that specifically, but I think it does. So the, the, the second floor is sort of tapered so that it is longer on the south side and shorter on the north side to reduce any potential shadow impacts on the neighbor to the north who has no concerns with the project. If you go to the letter that I submitted, um, let's scroll down.
Sorry, not to, to interrupt, but just, I think if I tell you my concern, it might help you out in answering.
Sure.
I think this laneway ultimately is going to be a laneway with a lot of laneway suites and probably should, and so I'm.
I think so too.
I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, it will be straightforward if someone else bought this property to convert it to a laneway suite or if, you know, they would need to come back to us for, for further variances to make that change if, if a future owner wanted to do that.
I think the, I don't think any variances would be triggered off the top of my head for this to be converted into a laneway suite. I think that they might want to rebuild and add some additional height to bring it up to the, the height that the laneway suites by law permits. But in terms of other variances, I don't think it would trigger the, the angular plane. It doesn't trigger the setback from the main dwelling. There's enough soft landscaping. So off, I, nothing jumps out at me off the top of my head as being triggered under the laneway suites by law.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, members? All right, seeing, all right. All right, there are no further deputations on this. So members, we can take it into a discussion here. An ancillary building, non-residential, requiring these four variances. Anyone want to opine on that or give us a motion?
Yes, I, I find this type of development and improvement to be desirable and, and I would therefore like to make a motion for the committee to approve.
Thank you very much. Missouri, all right, Nizila on secondary?
Can I, can I do a friendly amendment if, if it's possible? Do you accept to tie it to the TTC reports dated September 3rd, 2023? They had, they recommend some conditions?
Good for you, because I think I had seen that initially and don't have it before now, but I think that'd be a friendly admission to go through the TTC process. All right. All right, all in favor then of that, yes? All right, fine applicant, it has been approved and got that condition relating to TTC review. I don't know where you are sort of in terms of closest to a subway station or something like that, but okay.
And through the chair.
Right at bath first.
And through the chair, that's seconded by Ms. West, Member West.
Member West.
I'll second it.
Thanks so much. All right, all in favor of that? It's passed the unanimous, Deputy Secretary of Treasury, good, good, all right. Okay. Okay, just move on here. All right, members and audience, then turning to item three, 129 Euclid Avenue. It's in the Spina fort York Ward. Just going to, I'm going to read out its stated purpose and just tell you what the committee has on file here. So at 129 Euclid, the purpose, to legalize and maintain the new three-story semi-detached dwelling with a rear third-story rooftop patio partially above the second story, a partially covered front porch with stairs, and a rear ground floor patio, portions of which was constructed beyond the limits of an approved building permit. Also, a two-story ancillary building, a detached one-car garage with one laneway suite above, cantilevered on the second story at the south, southeast and west sides. It will be constructed in the rear yard abutting the laneway. There'll be two residential dwelling units on this lot. The committee has the following, again, a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a revised site plan and elevations, four photographs, a covering letter from Ameren Zabuni, sorry, Amer, Amer, sorry, Zabuni, excuse me, agent. This is in order to comply, of course, relating to the building part that would have been beyond what was initially approved. And commenting agents, we have a comment from manager of staff report from community planning. All right, in connection then with 129 Euclid Avenue, could we have the applicant or the agent for the applicant come to the mic?
Through the chair, we have the agent on the line and we do have one registered speaker, registered in interest at 103 Euclid Avenue.
Thank you, that's helpful. All right, would the applicant agent please identify themselves?
Thank you, Alexander Overholt, calling from 1140 Queensway in Etobicoke. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for providing the explanation of our purpose for our application today. I'm going to go forth and explain as to why we find ourselves here today.
Okay, thank you. I see, I see, I'm seeking six, six variances, okay? Go ahead.
Yes, as per the order of comply that was circulated to the committee of adjustments on July 11th, as you know, there is an existing building permit that has been issued for this project. I do want it to be known to all that the footprint that we are pursuing today is the exact same footprint, both in width, length and height of what was previously approved in the original building permit application. So we're all aware, the existing building permit was classified as an addition and interior alteration permit. Classified this way because we may propose to maintain more than 50% of the existing walls above grade. Unfortunately, due to certain decisions made during the demolition process, more than 50% of the walls were unfortunately removed. This additional demolition has caught the eye of the building inspector who then issued the order to comply. As our, as our scope of work for our project is no longer classified as an addition alteration, but now classified as a new structure, we are now forced to move forward with pursuing the zoning variances that are associated with the existing structure print. I do want it to be known that we have worked closely with community planning to review our application and our circumstances. And in discussion with them and moving forward with revising our front yard softscape variance, they are happy to move forward and providing support for our application today. Thank you.
Thank you, and members, I'll just note, my, my own note is, yes, it was a recent planning staff report, probably our supplementary agenda and essentially recommending tying to plans. But are there any questions for the applicant speaker here? Yes.
I have concerns about how that one wall that was to remain in place was eventually demolished. Was that demolished on purpose or was that demolished by mistake?
Um, it was definitely not intentional to demolish the wall as it's delayed the project on considerable amount of time. It's my understanding that in discussion with the builder on site, due to the lateral instability of that wall, they would decide to remove the wall in, in fear that it would obviously collapse. Of course, this could have been maneuvered in a different way by providing temporary shoring or bracing for the wall, but unfortunately, this was not the side to do on site and we are now faced with the situation we're within.
All right, anything further from committee? All right. All right, sir, I'll just ask you then to stand by. We're going to call on a person who's, has a matter of interest in this. Yes, Madam Secretary of Treasury, can you identify who?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Hello, good morning.
Can you hear? Morning.
Could you just give us your, your full name and municipal address, please?
Uh, my name is Carmel Larkin and I own the property at 103 Euclid Avenue.
103, all right, thank you.
Um, my biggest concern with the variances is, I think, it has to do with the front yard, chapter 10.5.40, where the front porch will, stairs will be located zero meters from the front line. And the second one is a minimum, like the zero percent of soft landscaping. My biggest concern is that it may turn into a parking spot and the street is already quite congested. And so I'm hoping that if you're building a second residence and you've got a garage in the back, you're not planning to use this as a parking pad.
Yeah, I just wondered if, if you know, what's its physical condition right now? Is this a, is this a grassed area or garden area at all, the front yard?
Um, currently on site, existing is, there's existing payrestone terrace in the front yard, but in order to obtain the support from planning, it was revised to move forward with adding sod, the entirety of the front yard. So we will no longer be able to park there if that was the intention to begin with and all parking will be occurring within the laneway suite in the rear.
And that sodding then is, is that, that's shown on a plan that planning's.
Yes, if you, if you scroll to the left of the drawing on which fronts Euclid Avenue, you'll see that it says proposed softscape. So we're no longer having any hardscape prepared within the front. It's just grass and sod. And I believe community planning has also recommended that a tree be planted in the front yard as well, which we're very much happy to move forward with.
All right, thanks, thanks for that. Anything further from that interested person? Otherwise, committee will discuss.
No, I'm fine. That was my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you. So, members, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe there was a supplemental report suggesting it would be tied to, tied to site plans. It seems to be, like, I think, a reasonable condition. So if someone want to come forward to that, yes, Nizila, please.
Do you have a question?
I, yeah, I was, I was just going to make a comment first.
Oh, yeah, first.
That, you know, I thought that that party and interests comment about the parking was, was a very good one. And, but I, I would just maybe reassure, reassure them that they would need to apply to have a parking pad for it to be a legal one. There's currently no curb cut there and I doubt, I don't think that this falls within an area where transportation services would give that, so it, but I, but I recognize the concern that often people do create illegal conditions. So, you know, I appreciate her having raised it, but I think there isn't a concern.
Thank you for that comment, yes.
And with that, I'm happy to move it.
Yes.
Yeah, because I, I think the variances themselves are minor. It's enabling something that otherwise would have gone through as a building permit. So for those reasons, I moved to approve it, subject to the planning condition that it be tied to the design drawings as noted in the planning report.
Thank you. Is there a secondary for this motion?
Through the chair, to Member Gosh, do you also want the planning condition number two regarding the tree to be planted in the front yard or no, just condition one in respect to tying to the landscape in the site plan drawing?
I, I think it's better to only do one because I am concerned about the tree being cleared by a city municipal department, but just for the applicant hearing this, we do think the tree is a good idea and hope you proceed with it, but I wouldn't make it a condition.
All right, is there a secondary for that motion?
I can.
Please, I had Nizila, I should, Ms. Adarati I should put, right?
It's fine, Ms. West is fine too.
All right, so it's been seconded by Ms. Adarati and all in favor then of this? Okay, was this, thank you, it looks like unanimous, and I'm Deputy Secretary of Treasury. All right, thanks for both of you for commenting on this. I hope the, I think the resolution here is, is pretty good and good luck with that project. All right. Moving ahead then to item four on the agenda and the address is 64 Humberview Road. Here's what the city has. Here's the purpose, first of all, is to alter the existing one and one-half story detached dwelling by constructing a complete second and third story addition, a canopy over the existing front porch and a front third store, third story balcony. The existing parking space within the interval garage will be converted into habitable space. Committee has a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a revised site plan, a revised zoning waiver. We have email correspondence from John Ramirez as agent and we have a private arborist report. And we have correspondence between Mr. Ramirez's agent and the supervisor of street parking and permits. Finally, in terms of comments and agencies, we have email, email correspondence from transportation engineering. And in staff reports, we have project manager archaeology, heritage planning, urban design, city planning that was received in September the 11th. We have also communication supervisor from the Ravina Natural Feature Protection. And finally, from a planner from TRCA has also, has also given a report. All right, just, great. All right, that's the material that we have. All right, agent or applicant, please identify yourself. Let us know if you're online or if you're.
Hello, good morning.
Hi, good morning.
Hi, this is John Ramirez.
Yes, all right, John, you're the agent, yes, okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start presenting, that's okay?
Sorry, through the chair, just to note for the record, there are no registered speakers for this item.
Helpful and all. All right, John, yeah, please, please proceed. I'm just, I've read out the purpose and I see that there are four variances that are being requested. Go ahead and.
So we can just flip the slide to the next page. We have four variances that we're applying for. One is in regard to the, the, the second floor balcony. We have, we're requesting some extra floor space index from zero, 0.4 to 0.71. We have a reduced side yard setback that we're requesting and we are reducing our parking space from one to zero. Can we go to the next slide? So our first variance is, it's in regards to the platform. I apologize, it's, it's higher than the second floor, so it's on the third floor. What you see here, this image here is the existing building. What, what we're asking for is that balcony that's on the third floor, which is highlighted in blue. And we're approaching 0.55 meters. It's really mostly like a Juliet balcony. You can't really put furniture there, it's just to open the doors, stand outside and, and look at the view over the, over the forest. Can we go to the next page? So for our floor space index, we're asking an increase of 0.31%. You'll see that this, again, we're, we're not adding any new additions or any new footprint. We're building on the existing footprint. You also notice that the lot is pretty unique in this area. It's smaller than the rest. That's why our numbers are going higher. And, and so for those two reasons, we need this, this variance to be approved. Can we go to the next slide? So here we're asking to reduce our side yard setback to 0.75 meters. 0.75 meters is the existing setback today as the building stands today. So again, I'll remind you that we're not adding any new footprints, we're building on the existing footprint. So, you know, to comply with this side yard setback would be very difficult. I think if we tried to do it, it would probably increase the impact to the neighborhood. So we felt it would be better just to build right on top of the existing walls. So we're asking for this side yard setback variance as well. You also notice that there's another 10 feet reserve on the city side and there's a bunch of hedges and trees there that would also listen to the impact. of hedges and trees there that would also listen to the impact for whoever's driving by the neighborhood. Come to the next slide. Cue. So, we're proposing zero parking at this time. The homeowners are aware that they won't be able to park here. They use transit anyways. There's old, there's two subway stations that are near Old Mill and Jane Station that are within 10 to 15 minute walk, plenty of bus options. But just to give a backstory, the existing house had an integral garage. The homeowners hired a contractor architect, but, and however, they took the approach of building up a low-grade parking space illegally. And they finished the main floor, created all into livable space, and then they left him with this low-grade garage. You can go to the next slide just to get a, an image of how it used to, the one in the middle was what it used to look like. The one on the right, you'll see, was what it looks like today. So, you know, a lot of money was put into this project. We decided, after talking to planning, to close it up and not offer parking. The main floor is already front, and we're just going to leave the below area storage base for front to use in the basement. Maybe down the road, if they need parking in the front, they'll ask for, they'll come back to ask for relief for front yard parking space. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer it.
Yes, I was concerned about the side yard setback, the reduction there, but you're saying that it's an existing situation, and I suppose the other thing is, it's an unusually shaped lot.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, members, any questions for the agent here? No? All right, seeing, seeing none. All right, sorry, just ask you to stand by, and I'm sorry, Deputy Secretary, was there a further speaker? No, no, on this one, I, I get right, yes, no, thanks so much. All right, members, I guess bring us in to ourselves. We can go out of committee if you feel you want to direct a question to the agent, but there is no other person making a deputation this morning. Someone like to weigh in on these four requested variances? Yes, please, Nizela.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application, subjected to, transportation have no concern, just subjected to heritage staff report dated...
Yes.
...dated September 10, 2024. Then comment section, they required the archaeological assessment, and also subjected to TRCA staff report and condition number one of urban forestry.
Good, I think that's quite complete. All right, a secondary for that motion with those conditions? Yes, Mr. Bizinet. All right, all in favor then? All right, sir, the approval's been, approval's been given. Yep. Okay, very good. Okay, yeah, sorry, folks just catching up here. Next item on the agenda then is number five. It's address 122 Marion Street. Just going to indicate what the purpose of this variance application is, and is as follows. It's to convert the existing two-story, two-unit detached dwelling with a secondary suite in the basement and a single-family dwelling by constructing a rear and partial side two-story addition with a rear ground floor deck and a second story balcony. The existing garage in the rear yard will be maintained and unaltered. Committee has the following: communication, plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, two photographs of the subject property that were received July 2nd. We have a diagram of comparable building depths from Stephen Fong as agent. We have the rental housing demolition and conversion declaration of use that was received July 23rd. All right.
Through the chair, we have the agent on the line, and no registered speakers for this item.
Thank you, very helpful. All right, with the applicant or agent, if that's Stephen Fong?
May I start?
Yes, please, just, just give us your, your name and your mailing address, Stephen.
Mr. Chair and committee members, I'm Stephen Fong from Stephen Fong Architects, 663 Bluer Street West.
Thank you, all right. Let me just get to this. Yes, okay, Mr. Fong, that's right. You want to, two variances are, I saw, the first one quite, quite small, floor space index, okay.
What you have before you are two small variances. We feel that this project meets the four tests of the Planning Act. Both of these variances are very minor. Depth goes, is simply 0.65 over what is allowed, and as you saw by our diagram, it is in keeping with the neighborhood. The gross floor area is 0.71 instead of 0.69. Again, that's like the 2.4% overage in terms of the gross floor area. We feel this enhances the use of an existing house. It is going to stay as a existing house, and so we feel it's in keeping with both the zoning bylaw and the official plan.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fong? No, seeing none. All right, we'll take it into ourselves, members. Yes, please, Mr. Gosch.
I'll just go right into a motion.
That's fine.
I agree that these are very small variances that are sought. And looking at the, the application, it clearly, these small variances clearly meet the four tests. Therefore, I move to approve it, and I don't see any conditions recommended. So I move to approve it without condition.
Thank you. Secondary for that motion, yes, Mr. Bizinet, second. All right, all in favor then? Yes, good, okay. All right, Mr. Fong, the variances have been granted by committee. You've got, you've got a copy of the decision.
Thank you.
Just turning to item six, that was earlier deferred this morning at 1200 Dundas, so that matter has been dealt with. And going on to item number seven, then the address is 1981 Davenport Road. And let's take a second to call that up. Let's take a look at that. Yes, okay. So with respect to this Davenport Road property, here's its purpose. To permit a retail use convenience store on the ground floor of the existing two-story mixed-use building. There'll be a total of two residential dwelling units on this lot, two, sorry, two units located on the second level. Committee has the following: a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, three photographs of the subject property, and there's mention of an earlier Committee of Adjustment decision going back to 2011. All right, let me just call that up. Two variances appear to be sought here. Yes, all right. All right, could the applicant or the agent for 1981 Davenport, please address the committee? Give us your name and address.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
My name is Addison Milne Price. I'm a planner from Design Plan Services located at 87 Skyway Ave, Suite 200, here on behalf of the owner and tenants.
Thank you, that's, that's very clear.
And through the chair, we have no registered speakers for this item.
All right, thank you. Helpful to know. Yes, well, I guess, is there any particular submission that you want to, want to make? You want a retail use, a convenience store on the, on the, on the ground floor? It's not a, it's not a permitted use, okay. You want to address that, Aya? That one, first of all? You've got a use that's not permitted, so you're asking for a variance. There was a time, many, many years ago, when it was thought that you shouldn't change the use by minor variance process, but it has, over the years, been accepted by the, by the courts. But, sorry to throw that in there. What's, what's existing on the ground floor now? Is there, is another non-residential use there?
Yes, absolutely. Firstly, Chair, just to address your, your first point, absolutely, no, different municipalities have taken a different stance on changing the use through a 451 application. The text of the Planning Act does make it explicitly clear that the use of the land is something that, that can be varied. So in my view, there is no legislative problem from this application.
Thank you.
In terms of your, your second question, just a brief description of the history of this property. The earliest known use I can find on this property was an IDA pharmacy with the residential uses still existing on the upper floors. Based on the account of the property owner and the historic Google Street View imagery, it appears that pharmacy operated for several years in the early 2000s until the land was purchased by its current owner in 2010. Upon purchasing the property, the intent of the current owner, JTM, was to operate a small café, and that's the reason for that previous Committee of Adjustment approval in 2012. That decision, as you mentioned, is in the package of the committee. However, this café use never actually manifested on the property. Instead, the first floor of the property was used as a property management office occupied by the owner for many years until it was leased by Lucky Larry's Convenience Store earlier this year. I'll point out that throughout this entire time period, the residential uses on the upper floor of this property have remained unchanged. And, and really what brings us here today in front of you is that upon requesting a retail license from Toronto Municipal Licensing and Standards, the operators of Lucky Larry's were informed that the properties didn't have zoning permissions under the current zoning bylaw of 569-2013. We had quite a few discussions with zoning and with the Municipal Licensing Standards staff. There may be a legal non-conforming aspect to pursue here because there has been a non-residential use on the bottom floor of this property, really for as long as I have been able to find in the history. But we felt the most straightforward way to address the situation is simply to request for a variance to the current in effect zoning bylaw. I'll also state, Mr. Chair, for your benefit, that this property is currently operating as a retail store, and I confirmed that physically on a site visit yesterday. I'll just point out that municipal staff there are aware of this. There is no order to comply issued on this property, and we have informed them that we're currently in the process of this application.
Thank you, it's very helpful. Members, I think this is reasonably straightforward, but I put it to you. First of all, any, any questions of the speaker? No, all right. Then I would happily entertain a motion.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to put forward that motion. I think it would actually be absurd for this property. When you look at it, it was clearly always intended to be a retail use, and it's on a busy street on Davenport. It would be absurd for it not to be retail. So I, to me, not only is this minor, but it, but it would be problematic not to approve it. So for those reasons, I move to approve the, the variances.
I think there are no conditions. All right, is there a secondary for that approval of these variances? Yes, Nizela?
Yes.
All right, all in favor? Yes, all right, this is, this is passed. All right, sir, good luck with that retail use.
Thank you, sir.
Approved, okay. All right, just moving to number eight in a moment. 508 Dawes Road, and just bring that up. Yes, thank you, everyone. Just to getting to this particular application, here's the purpose at 508 Dawes Road. It's to legalize and maintain the existing four-story apartment building by permitting the increase of the number of residential units and to reduce the amenity space on the lot. There will be a total of 65 residential units. Committee has before it the following communications: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, 10 photographs of trees on the subject property, a rental housing demolition and conversion declaration of use and screening form. In order to comply, there's opposition from Mr. Manor at 219 508 Dawes Road that was received September 13th. All right.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent on the line, and we have a number of registered speakers in opposition, 13 registered speakers, some of which are here in person and some of which are online.
Okay, I understand, all right. Well, it's helpful to know. All right, so I'd ask the agent or applicant then on this minor variance application on Dawes Road, if that person would come forward on the mic and give us your, give us your name and your municipal address, please.
Good morning, through you, Mr. Chair, my name is Sal Creamy. Address is 2572 Edmonton Avenue West, and I am here to represent this file before you.
Right, okay, I'll just take a quick look at this. Perhaps, yeah, tell us a little bit about what you're asking in terms of number of units up to 65. Sal, what's the existing situation in terms of number of residential units in this apartment building?
Gladly, through you, Mr. Chair. The project, the property was purchased by the current owners with 62 units. Since purchase, two units were constructed, and that is the reason for the order to comply. There was a bit of a, I don't want to offend anybody, but an ignorance factor. The zoning on the property permits 65 units, so the owners thought as a right, the units could be constructed, and that is why two are constructed. One is proposed for a total of three additional, bringing the number to 65. The resulting variances to amenity space are a bit interesting. The, and, sorry, did you want me to get into a presentation?
No, I don't think, I think you can, you can, sorry, address directly those two variances, and they both, I guess, relate to amenity space. So let's dwell on that issue.
Yeah, no, correct. The requirement for amenity spaces on this property with the current zoning under 569-2013 came into force with a later revision in 2015, well after the date of construction of these buildings, which is the vintage of the 60s, early 70s. As such, actually, no amenity space is, we'll call it amenity space for the tenants, is actually being affected. The two units that are constructed, units 110 and 111, were in, are in place of previous storage for the maintenance of the building. So it was more the site superintendent had large storage rooms, which would, they would store extra appliances and maintenance equipment. And unit 112, which is the proposed unit, is actually where the current laundry room is, which is actually going to be relocated across the hall. And that relocation will not happen until the new room, new laundry room, is finished, pending approval of this Committee of Adjustment. So in fact, there is no loss currently to existing amenity space, nor will there be if this application is granted and unit 112 is allowed to be constructed. Further, I want to add, with this unit's proximity to Taylor Creek Park and a small parquet just to the east of this subject property that is within walking distance, there is an abundance of public outdoor amenity space and also some exterior amenity space what, in what we'll call the rear yard of this subject property, which is surrounded of other buildings that share open spaces jointly. And I would like to open it to the committee if there are any questions at this time.
Yes, thanks. So the laundry room is going to be, is going, is going to be relocated, it's not going to be removed? That's the situation, right?
Correct, yeah, and you can see that, you can see that on Plan A 1.5.
I'll just take a look at the screen, okay.
Yeah, A 1.5.
And through you, Mr. Chair, may. How many machines, washers and dryers are there in the current laundry room, and how many are intended to be in the proposed one?
So there will be the same number of machines proposed in the new room. Basically, the existing machines are going to be relocated to the new room. In terms of exact number of equipment, there's actually a representative of the owner in attendance today if you would like clarification on number of machines.
Sure, so it'll be the same machines, and every single one of the machines will be relocated? Can, perhaps the owner's representative can clarify that? Or, sorry...
So you'd like to call, you'd like to call to the stand now, Raul?
Morning, sir. Sorry, are you the owner of this property?
No, I'm a representative. I am a regional manager for this property.
A regional manager, okay. So a question from one of my members then relating to the laundry room wanting to ensure that at least the same amount of units, sorry, same amount of washer/dryers as before?
Yes, so same amount of washer and dryer will be relocated to the new laundry room. It will be exactly the same. We are just transferring the appliances from one place to another place.
And how many appliances are there right now?
Right now, there is a four and four.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Sorry, can you state your first and last name?
Rahul Brambat.
And sir, just while you're there, in terms of the, those two units, when were they approximately built, the two that have been, who have been added?
I'm not sure because I just joined the company in 2017, 2018, but it's before me, before I joined the company.
So before you joined, okay, all right.
So before 2017?
Before 2017, before I joined the company, yeah.
And are there tenants in those two that have been?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, an important note on that. They are currently rented, and the rents are below market value rents for those two units, and that is the same intention for the unit that is going to be created, below market value rents. So these are affordable units.
And just another question, how were the tenants of the building informed of this meeting? Where did you post the notice?
The notice is at the front. We posted. So notice is at the front based on our super tenants, or our superintendent posted at the front.
Sorry, yeah, so the sign was posted outside. Was there, were, I guess my question is, were any additional measures taken to inform the tenants aside from posting the sign outside?
No, just we posted a sign outside.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, the standard committee of adjustment process would have had each tenant receive mailed notice.
Mailed to each tenant, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Through the chair to the agent, the standard process is that the notice needs to be posted by the property manager. The notice is sent to the property manager, and the property manager is to post that notice in invisible spot in the lobby for the tenants to see in addition to the signage on the site.
Which is what was done?
So is that correct, the property manager that's here?
Yes, so my-
Put it up on the bulletin board or?
Yeah, it's probably in the laundry room. I was not at the site, so I cannot confirm, but yeah, probably it's in the laundry room. I can confirm with my property manager for that.
All right, sir, thank you. And the agent who's on the line, I just ask you then to stand back for a moment, and we'll hear from others who are interested in this application.
Through the chair, we can start by hearing from the registered speakers that are here in person.
Yes, good.
So if the first one can please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Segal Aden. I live at 508 Dawes Road.
I'd just ask you, just to speak up a little louder, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, good.
My name's Segal Aden. I live at 508 Dawes Road. To be honest, what was said was a blatant lie. I've lived there for nearly 10 years, and there is no postage of the change that's about to happen. But thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I stand before you as a tenant, not just a tenant, but a representative of the many voices that are silenced in this building. Okay.
Maybe I just was asking, how did you then hear about this hearing today? So you're here.
Representatives of Acorn were kind enough to go around the building and let tenants know of what was happening today, as well as the changes that are about to happen to the building. But yeah, they were kind enough to let us know.
Thanks very much, sir. Please proceed.
Okay. I come today as a representative for the many voices that are silenced in our building. The housing crisis that we're facing isn't a statistic. It's a harsh reality of the countless individuals and families that are being pushed out of their homes under the pretenses of renovations. One name that comes to mind and quite often is Michael Clayton and his family properties. They're notorious for their ruthless tactics. They've built an empire on the backs of vulnerable tenants. Those who can barely speak English, those lower-income families unaware of their rights, and elderly who are too tired and in retirement, who lack energy to fight back and have the resources. These are the people who have made their homes in these buildings for years, people that have been here for 10 years, five years, 15 years, people that are dating back for 20 years in this building, only to be met with intimidation, harassment, and eviction notices. And let me please be very clear, these actions are not isolated incidences. They are symptom of a larger problem, a systematic failure to the protection of rights of the tenants and uphold the dignity of those in the housing, in the housing unit. We see it time and time again, landlords exploiting loopholes in law, evicting longstanding residents so they can jack up prices, maximize profits. Meanwhile, the properties they often acquire are of substandard, barely meeting city bylaws. They are infested with cockroaches, mice, bedbugs. They have mold festering in the corners of the buildings. They are often hired by third-party units to come into the building, barely do a hack-up job, repaint over it. Eventually, the building will have a massive rain, it will flood the entire fourth floor. Mind you, this building is four levels. The building will flood, the entire fourth floor ceiling will be molded with rain, and the paint is chipping off. They barely do anything, they just repaint it.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think this is, you only have five minutes, and so to help you out, I just wanted to mention that the things that we are here to consider are just the variances which have to do with the amenity space, and so I don't want you to lose your opportunity to address that issue as fully as possible. So if you could focus on that, that would be wonderful.
And just, I'll just add too, the kind of comments you're making perhaps should be put at some point to municipal, sorry, the municipal standards section of the city.
Gotcha.
As Mr. Gosha has properly said, you know, we've just got two minor variances for relating to amenity space not being on the property, yeah?
Yeah. I honestly, the amenity spaces specifically, there are about 120 tenants in this building. That's 62 units, or I believe 62 units, and 120 people in this building with only four washers and four dryers. The amount of people that have to go to laundry units just to do their laundry, and the lines that go outside of this unit, the amenity space, just to wash and have our basic human rights to wash our clothes is insane. And the mere fact, and I know exactly what room they're speaking of in which they want to change the washer and units to, it is the smallest, dinkiest room you've ever come across. And the fact that this laundry room that we're currently, the amenities are in, has leaks constantly. The washer and dryer are always breaking. There will be a flood, the window will break, there will be water gushing down to the floor, and the superintendent has to rush and douse the water down the drain. There will be broken ovens, refrigerators, homeless people in the amenity room half the time. It is, excuse my language, disgusting. Honestly, it's beyond disgusting, it's deplorable. And the fact that they want to move the amenity room to a smaller room is crazy, just to line up their pockets and get maximum profit.
When you say amenity room, you mean the laundry room?
Laundry room, yeah.
Yeah.
Laundry room.
Yes, all right, okay. Any further comment? Yes, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I'm assuming this is the case, but I just want you to confirm as a tenant, the units themselves don't have any laundry facilities.
None.
So this one laundry room is what's needed to be used for everyone in the building?
Hundred percent. And a lot of the tenants already go to the laundry unit that's close to Victoria Park in St. Clair or south of Dawes, which is kind of close to Vista Park. They'll take their wagons or their buggies and they'll walk, or if they're lucky enough to have a car, they'll drive their cars.
And can you maybe just briefly describe the amenity room? Not so much the problems, but just what's in it? Like, in addition to the washers and dryers, is there space for a table or chairs? What's in there?
Yeah, so you enter the unit, you enter the room. On the right-hand side, there is a small desk and about three chairs, two washers on the right-hand side and two washers on the left-hand side with about three refrigerators that are broken and two ovens that are broken. There are four dryers lined up against a wall in front of the door, and there are two windows on that wall. Those four dryers, one is currently semi-broken, the far left-hand one, and there is a broken bathroom in that space, but they've closed it off and kind of boarded it up.
Okay, and so the bathroom right now is not able to be used?
No. So to end this, oh, this is a very great point. I have a picture of it if you would like to-
Unfortunately, we're not allowed to take new evidence.
Oh, okay, cool. But there is a sink there. Every amenity room should typically have a sink for the laundry room, and that sink has, literally the 10 years I've been there, has never worked a day. We will constantly ask the superintendent maybe to put new hoses, maybe to fix it, so we can kind of like wash shoes or anything and put it in the dryer. It's never been fixed. It's been brought up multiple times, it's never been fixed. Also, the bathroom, maybe for the sink to be washed, never been fixed.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Through the chair to the members. For members' consideration, perhaps a deferral of this application regarding improper notification. We heard from the property manager who wasn't clear on posting the sign in a communal location within the building. So if the members, it's an option for the members to consider deferring this to have more time for consultation and due to lack of notification.
Well, I did hear that the Acorn organization was the one that communicated with some of the tenants to tell them about this application and hearing, so I'm open to that suggestion, members?
If no one had attended today, I would think that's important. With 13 people attending, I think there's kind of a pros and cons situation of, you know, there are a lot of people that have taken the time to be here today, and would it be better or worse to defer it?
Through you, Mr. Chair, Sabrina Salatino, Deputy Secretary/Treasurer. Under the Planning Act, we are required to notify, okay, through mailing as well as signposting.
Yes.
And it's apparent that the posting, the mailing went to the property manager, and it is their responsibility to ensure that each of the tenants in the building are aware of this application, as well as posting the sign. We can't ignore the fact that the property manager today stated that they only use the posting of the sign as their notification.
Yeah.
And so I'm concerned that we have not met our mandatory requirements under the Planning Act, and so at which point the members really need to consider a deferral of application for this.
I think that's a good point from the Secretary/Treasurer, and especially given that those that haven't been informed wouldn't necessarily have a right to appeal under the current regime.
All right. Members, I just personally am amenable to moving this aside, went over deferring this.
I don't think it's appropriate to defer it, even given our concerns, without giving the applicant a chance to address that, but I would be inclined to defer it based on the comments we've heard from staff.
Yes, then at this moment, I realize that there are further speakers in opposition. Yeah, I think we'll just put hold on it for a minute. I think we'll go back to the applicant agent again then, if I can hear from that person.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
We're, I think we more require definite proof whether the sign was posted or not. May I suggest that we stand this item down? The representative on behalf of the owner there today is a regional manager, not the specific operation site manager. So what if I reach out to them and get a picture of the sign that was posted, the notice that was posted within the building? The sign that was posted at the external of the building has already been submitted, is in your file. So if we are able to obtain evidence that the notice was posted within the building in the laundry room, I think that solves the notice issue.
Through you, Mr. Chair, unfortunately, we're not able to do that. Posting of the notice in the laundry room is not suffice. It is required to be posted in lobbies, in elevators, in all communal spaces within the building, as well as the posting of the sign. Again, my concern here is that we heard from the property manager, which stated that they only had posted the sign outside. And so, again, the concern here is that we have not met the mandatory requirements under the Planning Act for proper notification.
Respectfully, the regional manager did state that they posted it in the laundry room. That's what they thought they posted it.
Through you, Mr. Chair, again, we have stated that that is not suffice for proper notification.
Yes, okay, I want to take this into committee. My suggestion and inclination is this be deferred until-
Through you, Mr. Chair, sorry to interrupt one more time. What I can suggest is that we can defer this until the October 23 hearing, so that proper notices, and we will ensure that perhaps maybe this time, all notices will be sent to all unit owners.
Yes.
Okay? And that it'll be on the October 23 hearing.
Members, I think we should go with that. Could I have a motion then to defer this matter to the October 23? It's the very next month's hearing, so that proper notice can be-
Yes, but just, before we do that, I just would like to make some comments, maybe for the benefit of the owner and the, and their agent, that it will be a new panel in October that decides this matter, but some of what we heard about the state of the laundry room and the proposed laundry room being a smaller size are concerning, and I suggest you'll have a better chance with this application if you do work with your tenants to come back with a more collaborative option that improves the space for the existing tenants, as well as, if that's your intention, provides additional housing. But I'd encourage you to have those conversations. I don't think it needs to go in the minutes, but I'd encourage that.
And, yes, through you, Mr. Chair, and I also would like to add that City of Toronto have the multi-tenant housing board, that they also can, dealing with a lot of like these complaints that the neighbors had, like regarding the standard of the house and living, I think that will be just a point for them. And I totally agree with deferral because they, first of all, all the tenants will have enough time to communicate with the property manager. I know we heard from the regional property manager, but the regional property manager is not the one who dealing with every day in that building. So I'm for deferral. And if there's no other comment, I can put forward a motion.
Please do.
No more comment? Okay, so if there is no other comment from my colleague, I would like to, through you, Mr. Chair, I would like to put forward a motion to defer this application to October 23, 2024, so that the applicant have enough time to notify all the tenant and also put proper signage in the building.
Thank you. Is there a seconded for that motion? Yes, Mr. Bissonnet. All right, all in favor? All right, for those here and those online, the matter is deferred until the committee meeting on October 23, and as mentioned, proper notice to be given and sorted out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, all right. All right, members, I think we'll do perhaps one more application, and we may take a short morning break after that. I'll proceed then to item number, item number nine, 768 Spadina Road. 768 Spadina Road. I'll just, give me a moment, I'll just call that up here. Oh, purpose maybe. "Write an undersized parking space in the side-south yard of the existing two-story detached dwelling." We have some material, a copy of the plan, a survey and site plan, 18 photographs of trees on the subject property, a tree protection plan received in July. We have correspondence from Transportation Engineering, Transportation Services, and we've got an advisory report from Metro Links.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent on the line and no registered speakers for this item.
Members, do you think you need a presentation on this, or should we go into discussion and decision mode?
Mr. Chair, I don't think we need a presentation here. It seems to be a very straightforward variance.
Thank you very much. Well, then, let's, we'll just deal with it ourselves. "Under-sized parking garage, 2.6, increase to 2.3, parking is obstructed." Yeah, right. Well, members, if you want to proceed with a motion on this, I'd be glad to entertain.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the variance as requested.
Yes, I'll just check to see if there are any conditions. No, I see none. All right, can I have a second to that motion to approve? Yes, Nazella, thank you very much, all in favor, and the Chair is voting as well, so. Thank you, that variance is approved, sir, with respect to your parking space.
Thank you.
Okay. Did that a little faster than I thought. Thank you. We're going to move on to number 10, and following that item, we may take a short break, but let's just call up this. All right, number 10 on our agenda is 176, I guess Ava Road. All right. Here's the purpose of this application, "Want to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing side, that's a west, and rear second-story additions above the existing dwelling, and a rear second-floor balcony." Committee has before it, again, plan of survey, site plans, floor plans and elevations, three photographs of the subject property, a private arborist report, correspondence between the agent and tree protection. We have a staff report from tree protection and plan, and we have an advisory report, again, from Metro Links. All right, just give me a moment to get to this. All right. Hello, the applicant or agent here then for this property on Ava Road, would you please identify yourself and give us your address, please?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Enzo Lacassano from HDWG in Toronto.
Very good, all right.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have no registered speakers for this item.
So I see you really just have two variances, and I just got to kind of skim them quickly. So it relates to roofies, sorry, roofies. We don't like to get those too close to property lines, but this one is a little closer than the bylaw requirement. And then floor space index is going up. So just in a concise way, tell us why this application is brought forward and what you're asking.
Sure. Mr. Chair, the, actually, the roofie that we're talking about is actually an existing condition of the garage that's already, the one-story garages that are typically found in this area. So what we're doing is we're just going on top of the existing garage.
I see.
So this is really an existing condition that's already there. We're just mimicking it so that the elevation and the overhang is consistent along that west side. The additional floor space index is, again, it's come up from the additional space over the existing one-story, because we're just going straight up over the one-story building that's there now.
All right, and just, I see that. My note is that there's an urban forestry condition here, condition number two. Are you aware of that and satisfied with that?
Yes, we've already made an application to urban forestry.
Thank you. Members, I'm sorry, I jumped in there. Questions at all from any committee members on this? And no other speakers? Members taking this into committee then? Yes, Nazella, please.
Yes, through you, through you, Mr. Chair, as you mentioned, it's a very straightforward application. The variance number one is existing variance, number two, they just built above the existing footprint. Therefore, I think I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application, subject that bid urban forestry condition number two.
Yes, a second to that, Mr. Bissonnet? All right, all in favor? That passes unanimously, I'm sure. Now, I'm suggesting committee, committee, thank you, sorry.
Thank you so much, have a great day.
Thanks very much, thank you for appearing. Okay, I'm suggesting a 10-minute break here, comfort break for everyone, and then we'll come back and start with this property on Tranby. All right, I'm going to stop my video, et cetera, and my microphone.
Okay, through the Chair, we'll be reconvening in 10 minutes. Everyone, please turn off their mics and videos.
I think all members are ready. How is staff? Is this good? All right. All right, thank you, we're continuing with the morning sitting of the committee, and proceeding to agenda item number 11, and the address is 16 Tranby Avenue, which is in the annex area. Two variances are requested, and let me just state the purpose. It's to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear three-story addition with a rear third-floor Juliet balcony, a rear second-floor balcony, and a rear ground-floor concrete deck. Committee has the following, simply a plan of survey, site plans, floor plans and elevations, and we have a private arborist report.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent on the line, and we do have one registered speaker in opposition on the line.
All right, thank you very much. All right, then, we'd ask the applicant or the agent on this application to come to the mic, and please identify yourself and give us your street address.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Alexander Overholt, calling from 1140 The Queen's Way.
All right, thank you. Thank you. So perhaps just in a very sort of encapsulated way, just tell us a little bit about your application. We see that these two variances, one relating really to, I guess, side yard compliance with the balcony, and FSI is going up from 1 to 1.4. Okay, so just briefly tell us about your application, and tell us why you think this meets the tests the committee has to consider when granting a minor variance.
Happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to inform the community here that there is an existing building permit that was approved for this project that allowed us to develop both additional basement height in this ceiling with underpinning as well as a two-story rear addition. Upon during the construction phase of the structure, we noted that there is quite the large inhabitable attic space within the third story. Despite there being decorative dormers in the front, it is inhabitable at the time. Upon meeting with the homeowner, it was desired to move forward with opening up the third floor to ensure that it is habitable and used structurally to support new loads for residents, and to move forward with extending the third floor to meet the depth of the previously approved first and second story additions. The floor space variance comes forth from us opening up the third story to being habitable and to extending into the rear. And of course, the balcony variance comes forth as a need to have a balcony for proper egress due to the height of the structure. And because of the floor plans that was developed between us and the homeowner, this was really the only spot where we can have the balcony, which does encroach towards the side yard setback, of course. It is known within this community that there is a lot of existing third story spaces within the street due to the nature of the architecture of the structures, and it's within the homeowner's desire to move forward with ensuring that when this house is ready for occupancy that it resembles what is previously constructed and existing within Tranby Avenue.
Yes, okay, sorry. Anything further?
That's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So on the third floor, the balcony is just going to be a Juliet balcony on the rear third. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Yes, okay. Members, any questions? Nothing for the speaker? All right. All right, sir, I'll just ask you then just to stand back for a moment, and we'll hear from one other person.
Happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, all right. Would the interested party please identify themselves, name and street address would be helpful?
Ben, you have been muted. You may want to unmute yourself from your end.
Hello, Ben. Can you hear us?
Through the chair, it appears that Ben left the line, but staff are going to attempt again to phone and get him back on the line.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, Ben. You have been muted. Go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, this is Ben.
Yeah, this is. Yes, this is Ben. Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes, I can hear you now. Were you able to just hear from the applicant and me? Did you pick up just what's going on?
No, I did not pick up. I've been told that they had other building permits. My question is mostly around, you know, for this committee, how do you feel about receiving applications which are submitted with untrue or unfactual information? And it appears that this submission was done in a way to make it seem as though we are proposing some change. However, it's clear that this change has already been enacted, and it's already done, and that a lot of the heavy construction, to which I made a lot of complaints about, has already all come to pass, and that there is no longer requirement to pour cement and do all the heavy construction and stuff that constricts and, you know, congests Tranby Avenue. So I just wanted to know from the committee, how do you feel about, you know, this application being submitted with such unfactual information? And then for the city of Toronto, like, how is your inspect? What's your inspection process? Like, how would someone come to this building and see, look, you've built the third floor extension? Like, let's make sure when they apply for the variances, we factually state that this is done. Like, where is the gap in that this applicant and this developer has been allowed to submit an application and submit it in a way where it's worded as though they haven't done this work, when in fact they have done the work? I'm just curious to hear what you think about that.
Through the chair, through the chair to this speaker, we don't have anything on record on the city's end of any order to comply or any open violation. Anything previously on the site has been closed. There's nothing open before you today. So all the members are considering is the application as it is before you. There is no order to comply on the property, but we can also have the agent speak to the state of the construction.
Also, I don't think that we caught your full name and address.
Thank you.
Sorry, Ben Iwasco. My address is 12 Tranby Avenue.
I would, through the chair, just make the comment that we're here. So part of the process with the committee of adjustment is we do, upon occasion, get files where it's actually much more obvious to us that something has been constructed illegally or without a permit or contrary to the permit that has been issued. And our role on the committee of adjustment is to deal solely with the zoning issues that are before us, the minor variance issues, and to disregard that conduct, although we frequently will raise it as something that we're not condoning. Legally, we're not supposed to take any look at that conduct one way or the other, which actually can cut both ways to the applicants because if they've already built it, but it doesn't meet zoning, we're not going to consider the fact that it's already been built either. So they could be stuck in a situation where it's noncompliant. So but I just wanted to give you that clarification that this process isn't about that, but contacting the building department might be what you would want to do if you believe construction is happening without a permit.
So I don't believe it's happened. I can see it is done and it is built.
No, I'm saying that next time, next time, you know, if that were to happen, it's the building department that you should contact.
Because it does to me.
Through 311.
It does feel like it's this. What's the point of doing this? This is a waste of time, and this is a waste of taxpayer resources. Like, why are we paying for all these people to be here today in this committee? And if you're saying that they can build this, and then they can, after the fact, approve for this permit? Like, it's this is like a joke, basically. Why are we doing this?
Well, no.
What is the point?
Sir, I don't think you heard my answer. We could refuse this, and it could be required to be torn down. So.
Are you seriously going to refuse this? Come on. You are not going to seriously refuse this. The heavy construction has been completed. They had construction trucks for weeks parked illegally on Tranby Avenue, parked illegally, doing illegal activity in order to facilitate this heavy construction. So no, you're not telling me you're going to redo this. Come on, that's not true at all.
Sir, I can say that I've been on panels where we have, in fact, made that decision. We'll consider this one on the merits as we do all of the applications before us.
This is the chair. I guess I, you know, suggest you got concerns. I give the building permit a call. Committee here, our jurisdiction is really dealing with a request for a change in the zoning, and there are just two requests, one relating to a balcony and its sort of its side space. And then floor space index is going up to is should be one times the area and going to 1.4. Yes, go ahead.
It's already at 1.4. It's not proposed to go from 1 to 1.4. It is already at 1.4. And I think that the application should reflect this. It should not be asking for something you've already done. This doesn't make any sense.
Through the chair to this speaker, so the agent is responsible for this application and signs responsibility that the plans are true, and we don't assume that anybody is not being true with their application. However, the agent can address the statements that you're making right now. I would suggest and ask, if you do have any impacts or concerns from this development, perhaps you may state those now. How do these variances or does this building or construction impact you? That is what the committee is here to hear from. If you have nothing further to say about impacts, then we can move to the agent to address the statements that were made.
So the impact is it's too close to the neighboring property, to 14 Tranby, who's my neighbor. It's going to be like a platform that looks into all of our backyards. It's not within the bylaws. And then the floor space has already been broken. Like, there's no point in doing the floor space one. It's already decided that 1.4 is fine. Tranby Avenue is a very narrow street. The houses are packed very closely together, more closely than the average Toronto neighborhood. And that the heavy construction that was involved in this was a terrible disruption to our street. And so ignoring all that, you're saying we just move ahead. It's actually the citizens' responsibility to call 311. I think that's crazy. Like, I've told you that they've already built it, and it seems like you're upset with me for raising this with you in this committee. Like, I just how do you feel about if you approve this? You've approved something that does not have factual information on it. It is not true. And I have evidence. I've sent the evidence. It's in the extra materials folder. This has been constructed since May of 2024, and that this application for the variance was signed in July of 2024. So this was signed knowing that it was constructed, and I have a photo of it already being done. And you're saying you seem to be upset with me for raising this in this forum. Like, I'm sorry I don't understand the proper place to raise this, and I should be calling 311, but come on, I'm telling you. So like, that's all I would like to raise. That's the only purpose of me being on this call today is to raise this inconsistency with the way it's been applied for.
Okay, well, we hear that. I'm just trying to take a look at supplementary material here.
So that's this is the sign, the top, one at the top, the date is 2024-07-15. This is when the committee of adjustment application was applied for. And then I sent a photo. There should be another photo that Kirk said he was adding here. This is they don't have the tree fence on the front, first of all, so there's no tree fencing. There's never been tree fencing. They're continuing construction without this fencing. And then there was supposed to be another photo of the rear of Tranby Ave. If you keep scrolling down, there it is. So this was taken, if you scroll up, yep, this was taken on May the 13th, which is a month before. And you can see through this photo, there's the back, there's the extension. So the 1.4 floor space index is done. They've already done it. And they applied for it, knowing that it was done, and were allowed to write the application to say, we propose we're doing this. It's not proposed. This is completed.
Yes.
Through the chair.
As my colleague said, you know, you know, we even have to consider applications after they're built sometimes. It's that's part of our sort of our jurisdiction. We have to kind of put that aside. But I'm just wondering then, if this was me, et cetera, why didn't you or perhaps a neighbor maybe contact the buildings department or?
Because I had no idea about buildings department. I had no idea about the permit. Like, how am I supposed to know about this stuff? I just assumed they're moving forward. I'm making complaints to the city daily about the construction that's happening. I'm just living in my house. And I don't know. I don't know to call and talk to the building inspector. Like, why is that a citizen's responsibility? That's not my responsibility. Your building inspector, when they show up to look at this, to say, okay, is your permit actually, you know, showing truthful and factual information, should say, it's done. Like, why is it my job to tell someone that? That's crazy.
Through the chair, let's have these comments in mind and move to the agent and have the agent address these comments that are made by the speaker.
Thank you, panel members.
Okay, well.
Thank you. It's my understanding that the phasing of construction was completed in a manner where, again, we did have the existing building permit that allowed us to have the two-story rear addition, which we have been, of course, constructing for a long time now, which can effectively cause congestion on the street of Tranby. I can't speak on as to how vehicles were managed or parked on Tranby. And of course, on behalf of the builder, I do apologize for any chaos this has caused. But I do believe that the builder has been moving forward with proper due diligence in calling inspections with the building department for, you know, the underpinning, the framing, the structure, insulation. So it's come to my record that there has been no record of any order to comply or stop work orders. That's much of the information that I have on hand to provide.
So there's no order to comply, but I just to say what the neighbor is saying, he's saying what's being asked for is physically constructed. Is that the case here?
I'm unaware of the status on site. The last time I visited his site was to inspect the framing for the two-story structure and to inspect the existing third story. From there, I'm quite unaware where we stand on site. I do believe in installation inspections being either scheduled or in progress.
Members, any questions for this speaker? I'm a bit at sea yet. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. So was there a building permit issued for the construction that has been done on site?
Yes, there has been issued building permit to reflect the underpinning in the basement as well as interior alterations and two-story rear addition, as well as the front facade alterations. All that has been established and approved by zoning and the building department and issued as a building permit last year, I believe, July 2023, I think.
And you said rear two-story addition.
Yes, and what we are here today is to pursue the increasing the habitable space in the third story to match the depth of the previously constructed, previously approved two-story addition in the rear.
So this is an incremental application beyond what was in the original building permit?
That is correct, yes. We are looking, the homeowner is looking to expand a little more now that construction is underway.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Sabrina Salatino, Deputy Secretary, Treasurer. Has the applicant or, sorry, the property owners overbuilt from the permit that was issued? And this is a question to the applicant. So is the construction completed? Or are they constructing to add more?
They are preparing to add more. We've already undergone some structural inspections and to ensure that if we do get approved here, that the additional load applied into the third story habitable space will be satisfactory in the looking capabilities of the new LVLs you're adding within the second floor ceiling.
So then you are confirming that it is not yet constructed?
That is my understanding. I mean, however, I can, I don't know how I can get confirmation from the builder, perhaps. I'm not sure how this works. I wasn't expecting this.
The other question I have is, it seems to me, based on the FSI, that you might have needed that variance even for the smaller project. Was there ever, but we have no previous decision of the committee. Do you know if there was a previous application to the committee of adjustment for the first phase, or if that first building permit was able to go through without?
That first building permit was approved by both zoning and the building department. And yeah, I don't believe there is a previous committee of adjustment application.
Mr. Speaker, I'm not satisfied with the answer that's been provided. And the question was, what has been applied for here? Has that been built yet? The answer has been vague. We have someone who's providing us with information that this has already been built, and I'd like a clear answer. Has it been built, or has it not been built?
Is there a way where I could provide evidence of the current onsite conditions?
We're not able to accept new evidence today. We're not able to accept new evidence today. And can you clarify what your role is? Because to clarify for me what your role is with this variance application?
I'm simply the speaker. That's all my role is here today.
Do you own the property? Are you an agent? What's what's your relation?
Just an agent. Just the agent of this property.
Are you an architect, a designer, a constructor?
I'm a designer here, yes.
You're a designer?
Yes. I am not aware of what's currently on site at the moment. Perhaps that's my lack of due diligence. But I just I'm only informed of what needs me of that moment. And the last information I received happened to do with potential reframing to support the potential additional load for the third story. That's that's all.
So one of the reasons why it is important is the purpose of the application where there's something that has been constructed. It'll normally say to legalize and maintain something that's been constructed. And so we are able to alter the purpose of the application today if it needs to state that. But we need to know one way or the other. It's true that we can't take new evidence today. But if there's someone you can call, we can hear your submissions. I don't know, Mr. Chair, what your thoughts are on standing it down to get that information or?
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair. We wouldn't be standing down this application. But the option is deferral. The members could consider deferring this for the applicant to have time to verify their information as well as have some further consultation. So that is also an option for the members to consider.
I think personally, I think that's a factual way to to do it. We either approve or refuse. And I think we should go with the deputy secretary's ideas and allocate it to be deferred with evidence to be produced, including all building permits on the property, that sort of thing. Members, do you think you can have such a motion?
I I would be very reluctant. I wouldn't be able to support that motion because I look at this application and it is such an obviously minor variance that whether built to be built, not built, would obviously be approved. The only thing that matters is the purpose of the application. So we we so to defer it just to get information that won't help the committee other than to make sure that the purpose portion is accurate. And I think is a bit of a waste of our resources. We could alter the purpose of the application to read. And that would more be the motion that I would put forward to alter the purpose of the application to read, to alter or maintain the existing two and a half.
Through the chair, the purpose could be amended to reflect to permit the existing two and one-half story detached dwelling or permit the construction of the rear three-story addition, et cetera. We wouldn't be making reference to legalize and maintain because we don't have an open violation on this property. But the language could read to permit.
To permit rather than to alter. And then it could capture the so that would be what I would put forward as a motion. But if someone wishes to put forward the motion to defer, then. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I listened to what Mr. Gush proposed, but the point is the designer is not sure if it's completed or is it's just they want to just continue building. It's overbuilt. So it was kind of vague. I didn't understand what was the purpose. So I'm not sure if we change it, it will be a good idea because we assume that, okay, they want to to get a permit. But maybe giving them more chance and defer it, that will clarify that.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. We're at odds on that, though, because I, you know, yeah, the variances are so are so small. There's a large condo building that's going up only two lots over from this.
I know Tranby Street.
At at the corner of Tranby and Avenue Road. I think the objections that we've heard today are more about process and construction issues that don't have anything to do with zoning. So I'll put forward my motion. And if it doesn't pass, that's fine. So I'll I'll move to approve this with the purpose amended to read to permit the existing two and a half story detached dwelling, et cetera, rather than as it currently reads to alter.
And concurrent with that, then, is that you're you're saying that you're essentially moving approval of the two variances as we have?
I am, yeah.
Yeah, right. All right. Is there a second or in favor? All right, Mr. Muzanet is in favor. All right. All right, let's vote on this. All in favor of the motion? Okay, we have to. All opposed?
Through the chair, you wouldn't be voting because you would cause a tie. So.
Yes, okay, you're right. All right. Motion's approved then. And the application is amended to indicate that it's the it's permitting that. And, okay.
Through the chair and Member West is dissented.
Yes, I understand that.
And you're abstaining.
Yeah, I abstained. So the application amended as to purpose is approved by the committee. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, everyone. We return to our agenda. We turn to 193 Rhodes Avenue. This is item number 12. I'm glad to speak to that. 193 Rhodes Avenue. Purpose of the application: to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by permitting the front porch into habitable space and to construct a rear cantilevered second-story addition above the existing first floor. Excuse me. The committee has the following material: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, one photograph of trees, a cover, a letter from Mr. Oh, sorry, from Anavati agent, and we have a private arborist report. Okay, just need a second myself just to bring that up. Yes, all right, the four variances on. All right, could we have the agent or applicant please come to the mic and give us your name and address to start with, please?
Thank you, sir. My name is Shahid Anavati, and the address is 1304 Woodbine Avenue, Toronto, M4C47.
All right.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have no registered speakers for this item.
And so we just came off an issue dealing with habitable space, I think. So that's what you're seeking here. The front porch is going to be turned into habitable space and a rear cantilevered, sorry, cantilevered second story, roof eaves, FSI, front yard setback, side yard setback. Okay.
I have given a presentation already with the package. So if at all, that could be read out.
All right, I guess you're right. Let's go. Let's go with that, then, your your package. Yeah.
Okay, so the I've given I've given, could you could you show the letter which I have sent to the committee? Yes, that's one. So the primarily, all the conditions that are here are existing conditions. The if you look at the plans as well and the explanation that goes with it, we tried to give some kind of a setback of seven inches, which was the most possible. But the existing building itself is at zero setback. So it's very difficult for us to work on that. The only thing that we are able to do or would be under our control would be the FSI. And we are only increasing the FSI by a very small amount of square meters.
True.
So if at all, you could accept that, it would be really helpful. And the family is growing with two new kids. So that would be a very helpful thing for us. Any questions? I'm ready to answer.
Just in connection with variance four, then, yeah, so as a side yard setback should be 0.9 meters, and you're indicating it located zero. You're saying that that's a that's an existing built condition. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Members, any questions for the speaker? Yes, please. Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If there is no other question from my from other panel member, I'm ready to put forward a motion to approve this application. We are having four variants, three of them are existing. Only one is slightly 0.68 versus 0.6 FSI. It's very minor. Therefore, I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application with no condition.
Mr. Secretary, that motion? Yes, okay. Mr. Gosh, okay, good. All right, all in favor? Sorry, I'm gonna go all in favor in this sort of. All right. All right, sir. Approval has been given by committee for those four variances. So thank you for addressing committee today. And committee will now move on. Item number 13. 820 Church Street. Just gonna take a look here. Okay, a little more material than usual on this. But here's the purpose: to alter the development standards for a 38-story hotel building as approved under Site-Specific Bylaw 300 for 2023 by increasing the non-residential gross-for-area building height and mechanical penthouse height. The new 42-story hotel building will have a total of 192 hotel rooms. Committee has quite a few things: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, four photographs of the subject to property, cover letter from Michael Goldberg's agent, an arborist report, a functional servicing and stormwater management report, a landscape letter by by a company, a servicing report about groundwater, a servicing report called groundwater summary, a shadow study, a traffic opinion letter by Jeffrey Walker of WSP Canada, a waste analysis prepared by Joe Sorgant of Cine Light International. We have presentation materials from Mr. Goldberg. And we have the Site-Specific Bylaw 300 for 20, sorry, 2023. Fairly recent. Commenting agents, we have the reports from community planning and also from the Development Officer at TTC. All right, is it Mr. Goldberg then acting as agent this morning?
Yes, sir. Yes, Michael Goldberg, Principal at Goldberg Group. We are the planning consultants. And my address is 2098 Avenue Road.
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair. For the record, we have no registered speakers for this item.
Okay, all right. So Mr. Goldberg, you're not you're not increasing residential gross-for-area, then. Is that right? It's the it's the non, it's the hotel use that's increasing?
Yes, this is only a hotel, sir.
It's oh, it's only a hotel. All right, thank you. All right. Perhaps then, why don't you just go over the four variances quickly? And you can tell us. Sorry, I've got the wrong thing in front of me. Hang on, Mr. Goldberg. Yes, just get my fault. It's coming up to agenda here. Three variances. So GFA and they're above, I guess, the height limit in a in a diagram. So sorry. All right. I've said enough. Enough. Why don't you give us just a quick presentation of your views and why committee should grant these minor variances?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a very brief presentation because you do have a lot of material before you.
Yes.
But as you all well know, this is in a very dynamic part of the downtown of the city of Toronto. It's very, very close to both Yorkville and the intersection of Young and Bluer. As the chair had read out, we provided support material which comprehensively reviewed the incremental difference between the approved and the proposed matter from various technical perspectives. And all of those have been signed off on. We're very happy to have a positive report from city planning that reviewed it from an official plan perspective. We're happy to have an updated memorandum from TTC which provides some advisory comments. And these matters were circulated to the local councillor. And there's no and I don't believe you have any comments from the local councillor. This is just simply to add some more floors to make this a more sustainable development in a very, very good location. We have reviewed it in our correspondence from the standpoint of all four tests under Section 45.1 of the Planning Act. And I'm satisfied that all four tests, in terms of the general intent and purpose of the OP and zoning bylaw, it being minor, and of course, being appropriate development for the use of the land in the building, and I'm satisfied that jurisdictionally, the this is on all floors for the municipal for the C of A to positively address this application.
All right, just looking at the site map, and I think I just realized finally where this is. So this is that triangular piece, maybe a building was torn down recently. So it'd be north of Bluer and kind of Church and Davenport area. Is that correct?
Yes. It's the site of a one-story restaurant building. And it's surrounded by it's surrounded to the south and west by by TTC-owned land. And it's gonna be a car wash to the west. I believe the car wash has been taken down. And you can see here on the drawing, which is a very helpful drawing, we worked with during the zoning process to deal with the separation distance between this tower and the tower to the east that exists. It's a Toronto Housing Project. You can see there's a 25-meter tower separation. So nothing in this application affects this aspect, the tower footprint, in terms of where it is and how it's separated. And nothing in this application affects any of the ground plane and public realm related matters that were so carefully dealt with as part of the rezoning process. We're basically extruding the site up by four stories.
Thank you. You mentioned the TTC. And my note was that they wanted like a review request. Is that advisory only? Or have you made any kind of have you asked for a review of the application by the TTC?
Yes, I believe the September 9, 2024 memorandum acknowledges that.
In '21, okay.
They're only providing advisory comments. I don't believe they're providing any conditions at this point.
All right, thank you. Okay, members, I'm sorry, I've been doing a lot of talking. Any questions, Mr. Goldberg? Yes, please, Mr. Gosh.
For these types of applications, this is the first one like this that's a hotel. But we've had some that are condos or apartment buildings where a few extra stories are being requested to a to a tower. And usually, the story that comes before us is, you know, market conditions have changed. There's been the COVID pandemic, et cetera. And that's why we need something more than came with the original approval. And that does seem to, you know, market market conditions dictate that we now want this, I think, was in your cover letter. But it's just something that's a little harder to credit when the site-specific bylaw was approved only in March 2023, like, you know, just over a year and maybe, I suppose, a year and a half ago now. I'm just wondering, why is it like, what is it that's happened? Why wasn't this sought at that time? That's that's the question.
I think that's a perfectly fair question. And as you're all likely aware, the the planning process does take many years. This this planning process probably for the rezoning was probably about two years. The concept was conceived probably a year and a half before it was even filed. And and before it was even filed. And, and the, you know, at the end of the process, there isn't a, usually there isn't an opportunity to, to increase the matter, even if the pro forma and the market conditions would dictate that that would be a prudent thing to do. So what, what has happened, and I think you're seeing this in other applications for many other buildings around Toronto, is that it's clear that to create a buildable and sustainable project, some more floor space is helpful to deal with interest rates and construction costs and, and labor costs and, and so on. The planning consequence of, of the application is, it puts the application in a position to be built. Once built, this underutilized land is more effectively and efficiently and optimally built upon. It's in a, it's a commercial use, which is strategically located very close to Bluer Street, which is, you know, a very popular tourist destination in Toronto, and it's very close to the tourist destination, of course, of Yorkville and the rest of the downtown. So it, it is in, it's a planning principle that, you know, this would make more efficient and optimal use of the site, and this minor variance would help that be realized.
Okay, thanks. So in, in short, you're saying it is those sorts of changes to the market conditions, but that those were really affecting the pro forma even before you got the original approval because it took some time to get that approval?
Well, I would say, I would say it was probably creeping in, although the pro forma wasn't regularly being reviewed. But certainly after the approval, and once they start advancing into pricing and, and working drawings and so on, the, the pro forma becomes a much more prominent element in the consideration.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other member? No, okay. All right, thanks, Mr. Goldberg. We'll just take this into committee. Would someone like to put forward a motion then on this? No, sorry?
You can, you can, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll just put, put a motion to approve it. I do think that it, that these are minor in the circumstance. I think the two impacts that one would be most worried about in, of an increase of this nature in this type of location would be transportation and shadow. And I think that the reports that were provided to us show that the incremental impacts of these additional four stories are quite minor in both of those two areas. And so for that reason, I, I think this is a desirable use of this marginal lot in a very great location, and so move to approve Are there TTC conditions?
Yes.
So subject to the TTC conditions?
Through the chair, the TTC retracted their previous memo with their previous condition, and their subsequent report says after careful consideration to not apply the conditions from their previous memo, given this was all detailed through the zoning bylaw amendment application. So they've only provided advisory comments.
Okay, so without conditions?
Without conditions, yes. A secondary for that approval then, Mr. Bissonnet. All right, all in favor of that? Unanimous, chair's own member, okay, great. Mr. Goldberg, okay, eight, 20 Church Street, the approval has been given to committee for the variances requested.
Okay, have a, have a nice day.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, members, we'll move to item 14. I'll get that Riverside Drive. Ah, yes, as mentioned then, turning to agenda item 14, and the address is Three Riverside Trail. Here's the purpose: it's to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a front integral garage, a front covered porch, west side and rear basement walkouts, a rear first-story Juliet balcony, a rear terrace, and a rear in-ground swimming pool. Committee has the following, again, survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a covering letter from Daniel Peters as agent, there's an arborist, private arborist report, there's a TRCA permit number affecting the property. So it looks like a permit has been issued by TRCA. And commenting agencies, we have the emails from Transportation Engineering, staff reports from Ravine and Natural Feature Protection, and from, yeah, and from Urban Forestry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent on the line, and no registered speakers for this item.
Thank you very much. All right, we'd ask the agent then to address this. Come on, come online, give us your name and municipal address.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Terry Martino. I'm an architect with Grunweiss Architect and Associates.
Yes.
The address is 341 Kerr Street in Oakville, L 6K 3B7, and we are the agent for the owners at Three Riverside Trail.
All right, before maybe you make any presentation, I'm just going to talk about variance three for a moment, which is a stable top of bank. In another life, I fought these at a lot of administrative board hearings, but in any event, they, they do like to try to keep a 10-meter back from the hazard line, or what they call the stable top of bank. And in this case, the new dwelling will be 3.89 meters from the shoreline hazard. What about that? Could you comment on that?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through conversations and an application, preliminary application to TRCA, and in consultation with them, the proposed dwelling was situated further back from the stable slope, long-term stable slope allowance, which was identified through a geotechnical study on the property. And then again, in consultation, we believe that the development has regard for the existing development setbacks on the subject property. That is to say, it's further away than the existing dwelling. It's also further away from the long-term stable slope than the two adjacent properties. There's no increase to risk property, and there is no impact to control of flooding or erosion. And these are all policies within the living cities, policies of the TRCA. And we have, I think, as the committee has, approval from the TRCA as well as a permit.
I'm just seeing that.
For the development, yes.
They've issued a development permit, okay. Thank you.
That's right.
That satisfies that item. All right. Members, any, any questions? You wish a presentation on the other variances at all? Okay, not seeing any, okay. So members, let's just take this into committee then, to see the time.
I have a question after.
All right, we'll, we'll come out of committee, and, yeah, go ahead.
Just about the, about variance two, actually, the driveway width, what's the, what's the necessity of that?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair.
Eight meters is quite large, that's why, and, which is what's allowed, and so then you're going for an additional meter.
Thank you for the question, and through you, Mr. Chair. The additional width of the 6.73, which would be above the permitted 5.8, is located in one location only, and that's immediately in front of the garage. It's our submission that the width, the 6.73, you can see it indicated there in the front of the garage, is significantly set back from the street. It is well screened. You can see from all of the mature trees along there. I can advise the committee that the front yard landscaping is well in excess of the requirement for front yard. And I believe that the intent of the zoning bylaw in terms of limiting widths of driveways was in fact to permit, or at least increase the amount of landscaping, and so that it wouldn't have an impact on the street. It's my submission that in this case, it only occurs in the one location. The actual entrance to the lot is 3.5, a very modest width of driveway, and we believe in that manner it's minor in nature.
Okay, yeah, I think the purpose of that is, is all, also has to do with the width of the curb cut, but, but you've sort of addressed that, too. It's not in the vicinity of that.
That is correct.
Yes, Elizabeth, yes.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Just would like to get a clarification, maybe even from city staff. We received the September 9, 2024, the, the report from forestry, and we have a condition there. Apart from that submission of a complete application for a permit to injure and remove privately owned trees, so apart from that, which is a standard condition, do we have any other forestry condition?
Through the chair, no, we just have the, the memo that you just referenced with the urban forestry two condition.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Oh, through the chair, sorry, correction. We do have a secondary memo that should be in the supplemental package.
Yes.
Staff can also bring that up.
Which dated September 9, 2024.
September 11.
Or September 11.
So that's through the chair. So this is referencing an additional memo.
Right, okay, yeah.
Should have the secondary advisory memo. We'll just check to see if it's in the extra late materials in case.
Mr. Chair, when you're ready, I have a question.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yeah, we're just trying to clarify the forestry issue.
In our package, we have September 9, 2024, it's in the supplementary documents, and we have September 11.
So through the chair, I believe staff has the advisory memo on the screen.
Yes, I think that's, that's the supplementary one, I think, isn't it? Let's just have a look.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so it wants condition two?
Through the chair, yes, it's indicating condition two from urban forestry. Thank you very much.
Satisfied on that, all right. All right, Ms. Bissonnet, question or issue, yeah?
Yeah, the urban forestry report proposes that, one, it's tree number eight, if the applicant can consider altering their plan to retain the healthy protected tree, is that possible?
Thank you for the question. Through you, Mr. Chair. We have made application to urban forestry, and we will be working with them either to look at options for amending the driveway, or at least revising it, and/or additional plantings or compensatory plantings to replace the Austrian pine. But we have made a full application, which I believe is noted in the file, and we will be working to seek and, and get their approval, obviously, from urban forestry.
All right, thanks for that. Any member care to put forward a motion on this to deal with this then?
I, so that latest answer actually poses a difficulty for me, because I was going to try to tie the driveway to the site plan so that the width is only in that one location, but it also seems like the driveway is the issue having to do with tree number eight.
Through the chair, member Gosh, you could also consider a condition of tying to the site plan pertaining only to the driveway.
No, that's what I was considering, but it sounds like the driveway itself is the issue for tree number eight. So then I'd be, we'd be tying it to something that's helpful with respect to the driveway orientation, but not helpful with respect to discussions around the tree. Which leads, leads me to perhaps come to the opinion that since the driveway is a discreet, doesn't really affect the other variances of approving one and three, but not two. So maybe that's the motion I'll put forward.
Sorry, just, yeah, clarify that motion, sorry.
I'll put forward a motion to approve variances one and three, but refuse variance two.
All right. Is there a secondary for that motion? All right, Mr. Bissonnet. All right, all in favor of that? And, all right, the list should be shown as, sorry, as deciding. And the application's been approved in part, sir, gives the one and three, so I think you better do your best work with urban forestry. All right, I think the matter is dealt with.
Through the chair, and you're abstaining, or you're voting?
No, I'm abstaining. I'm abstaining.
And, and I would like to clarify for the record that my intention was to include urban forestry condition two.
So through the chair, approved on condition with urban forestry, number two.
Is that acceptable to Mr. Bissonnet, who had seconded my motion, urban forestry?
Okay, so we got, we got that amended approval. Members, moving on to item 15, 126 Barrington Avenue. Purpose is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a new second-story addition. We have, committee has a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, an arborist report, commenting agency, we have a staff report from urban forestry, tree protection and urban forestry. All right, let's get to that item. Oh, yes. And Madam Deputy Secretary, maybe we could just assist on this, because, because my note was initially urban forestry was thinking about denying variance three. Oh, maybe I got the, maybe I got the right item? No, I guess I, yeah, Montecrocker, yeah. Oh, Barrington, excuse me, jumped ahead. All right, let me get to Barrington. One item ahead. I don't know, it's very agenda, let's have a look, okay. Gain just to reiterate, alter existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a new second-story addition. There are four variances, so there's additional coverage. Length and depth is somewhat larger. Roof projections, again, to be no closer than 0.3 in terms of projection, but it projects a little longer here. Okay, could the agent applicant come on the line? And yes, as the previous speaker noted, it's afternoon now.
Through the chair, can you please just go through the materials received for this item?
Well, thought I had, but I'll go over it again for 150, 126 Barrington, which was to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a new second story. And committee had before at the following, yeah, plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, an arborist report, private arborist report. Commenting agents, we have a staff report from supervisor, tree protection and planning review. This is, of course, is from urban forestry, received September 12.
And through the chair, we have the agent on the line, and no registered speakers for this item.
All right, thank you. All right, would the agent applicant please speak up, and please give us your name and your municipal address, please?
Hello, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Mashad Meshkhar from Permitman, located at 108D West Weaver Creek Road.
West Weaver, okay, all right.
And I represent the property located at 126 Barrington Avenue. I'm here today to present our proposal, which includes a second floor addition, sidewall alteration, and interior modification. The application requests four variants. The application requests four variances as outlined in the zoning notice. Regarding the variance number one, two and three, about the lot coverage, building length and building depth. It's important to highlight that the existing locally building already exceed the permitted lot coverage, building depth and building length. However, the proposed second floor addition will actually be smaller than the correct structure. And furthermore, if you review the survey and online resource such as Google Maps, you will notice that the board adjustment properties also exceed the zoning by law limits in terms of the building length and in building depth. One neighborhood property is a two-story structure and the other is one and a half stories. Additionally, several homes along the Barrington Avenue similarly exceed the permitted building length, depth and lot coverage, demonstrating that our proposal is consist with the surrounding area. And regarding variance number four, about eve projections, as shown on page A010 of the, A10, sorry, of our drawings in west elevation, the eve, the eve projection is 0.2 meter, which align with the property line and matches with the existing eve projection. So in summary, this proposal provide the building more in line with the current zoning regulation, while still respecting the character and context of the neighborhood. The second floor addition is particular, is more compact than the existing structure. And additionally, many nearby properties have similar to creative building, have similar or creative building dimension in second floor, reinforcing the idea that this proposal align with the development pattern of the area. We believe that these variants meet four tests, and this adjustment will not only enhance via visual appeal of the property, but will also contribute positively to the overall harmony of the neighborhood. And thank you for your time and consideration of your proposal.
All right, thank you. And just to reiterate then, the one-story detached dwelling, as it exists today, then, you're saying that's, that's already there in terms of the, sorry, lot coverage and lengths and depth?
Yes.
Yes, all right, okay. So, members, any questions for this applicant then? All right, thank you. And can we take the matter into committee? And, members, would anyone prefer to put forward a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just, sorry, I have a question through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I know we got an urban forestry memo, but I want to get clarification. Do we have any condition from urban forestry?
Through the chair, there is urban forestry condition number one. And number two, we can have staff also put that on the screen, if that helps.
And, excuse me, this, this building has another application regarding the garden suite in rear yard. And I think the forestry comments is because of that application, the garden suite in rear yard. And for this application, adding second floor to the existing one-story building, no trees will be impacted by this construction.
Through the chair, there is no part of that garden suite that's part of this application. The plans indicate it's not part of this application. And forestry has not indicated that they're speaking to a separate application for garden suite. So we have to use what we have in this memo, which is referring to this site and urban forestry conditions one and two. If there is no issue at the time, forestry can just simply clear those conditions. But what we have before us is condition one and two.
Thanks, members. Mrs. Bissonnet, would you like to turn this into a motion?
Yes.
Please do.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application. We have four, four variants, three of them is existing. And just, I would like to add the condition of urban forestry, condition number one and condition number two.
Is there a second for that motion, please? All right, Mr. Gosch, all right, all in favor? This is unanimous vote, Attorney Secretary for that. So 126 Barrington approvals has been given for those four variances. Thanks for your attendance today. All right, 16, maybe this is the note where I had urban forestry was initially asking us to turn down certain variances. Okay, 16 Crocker Avenue, here's the purpose. To legalize and maintain the new three-story detached dwelling containing three dwelling units currently under construction as approved under T-Lab decision order 22, I won't go into all the numbers, which was constructed beyond the limits of an approved building permit. So it says approved by T-Lab, all right, which was constructed beyond the limits of the approved building permit. Committee has the following, a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, six photographs of the subject property, a covering letter from Daniel Falson, engineering consultant, presentation materials from Martin Mazierski as agent, references made to a 2019, sorry, 2022 Toronto District Committee of Adjustment, and also the, I see, the Toronto Local Appeal Body decision is also added, arborist report and an order to comply affecting the subject property. So in terms of commenting agencies, we have staff report from the manager of community planning, also from the supervisor tree protection, arborist forestry section. We have correspondence and opposition from Amriya Kazarni at 10 Crocker Avenue that was received. And I'll just check, yes, those are the materials. All right, Madam Deputy Secretary, in addition to the agent or applicant, then, is there an additional speaker on this one?
Through the chair, we do have a speaker listed in opposition for this item, registered to speak.
Thank you very much. All right, then, with the owner or agent for the applicant here on 16 Crocker Avenue, would you please come on mic and identify, give us your name and give us your municipal address, please?
Thank you, Chair. My name's Mark Mazierski.
Yes.
My address is 88 Scott Street, Unit 3507. You're on behalf of the applicant, of course.
All right, thank you. Just get to this in a second. All right, sorry, three, three variances required. Maybe just give us a brief outline, sir, and why don't you reference what the Toronto Local Appeal Body did? Issued an order, yeah?
Thanks, sir. I'd like to just quickly outline the framework of the proposal.
Okay.
Proposal here is related to a very similar proposal in terms of history, in terms of variances, to the proposal at 18 Crocker Avenue, which was approved by the committee three weeks ago on August 28, 2024. 18 Crocker Avenue is the other half of the semi of 16 Crocker Avenue. They, basically, they had variances triggered for the same reason, near identical variances. And I'll explain those right now, Chair. The proposal footprint, the build form and the site plan are consistent with the footprint, the build form and the site plan approved as part of the January 3, 2023 T-Lab decision, and are reflected in the building permit issued on May 29, 2023. The variances have only been triggered because the original T-Lab decision and building permit called for 50% of the main walls to remain in place, which ultimately could not be done because the applicant has been forced by structural issues that threatened the integrity of the building, both sides of the semi, actually. The integrity of the building, the applicant was forced to remove and replace more of the existing walls than initially planned and anticipated, thereby reclassifying the project from addition with lawfully existing rear yard setback and building footprint to a new construction that now requires three minor variances. And just to reiterate here, Chair, and clarify the purpose of the application. The language and the purpose of the application, which states constructed beyond the limits of the authorized building permit is not reflective of the building footprint or build form extending beyond the footprint or build form already permitted by the building permit or the T-Lab decision. Instead, is reflective merely of the fact that the building permit did not in itself permit for the old walls to be replaced, even if they were replaced with new walls in exactly the same place. Just to remind the tribunal, I have a history, a detailed file history of references to all the site plans, going back to an old committee of adjustment approval, then the T-Lab settlement plans, then a copy of the building permit plans and a copy of the current plans. There are schedule A1, A2, A3, A4 on page 11, 13, 15 and 25 of the presentation. And all of those plans will show that the site, the footprint of the building has not changed from the start. And they'll also show that since the T-Lab settlement, which has agreed to follow the neighbors to the building permit, the current proposal, the site plan has not changed at all. And just to cover the variances now, Chair, quickly, the rear yard setback. The rear yard setback is an existing condition that would be deemed legal nonconforming, but for the additional main walls that had to be replaced for structural reasons. I provided a table of some committee of adjustment decisions to talk about other approvals in the area. However, the best way to illustrate how the proposal's rear yard setback is consistent with the character of the neighborhood is looking at a zoning map that demonstrates the proximate relationship between the lot lines and the exterior walls of the neighborhood buildings. Chair, there's a schedule E on page 32 of 48 of the presentation. This visual provides many examples of zero or, and that schedule there, if you zoom in, Chair, it shows the building footprints relative to the lot lines. This visual provides many examples of zero or near zero year at setbacks just from small sample of nearby properties. For example, the existing wall at 22 Crocker to the immediate west, the rear wall at 18 Crocker Avenue, the other side of the semi with 16 Crocker Avenue, also built right up to the top, the lot line. This was, again, subject to an approval three weeks ago for some very similar application. Existing rear wall at 9 Bellwoods, southeast corner of Crocker and Bellwoods. Existing rear wall at 35 Bellwoods Avenue. Existing rear wall at 17 Robinson Street. Existing rear wall at 119 Robinson Street. Chair, you'll see on that exhibit, there's, again, this is schedule E, page 32 of 48, that there's, those building footprints go right up to the rear lot lines in those examples. Again, there's probably zero or near zero year at setbacks that, these zero and near zero year at setbacks are largely, likely largely legal nonconforming, same as this rear at setback really was, and key part of the existing character in this neighborhood and a densely packed residential area just off of Queen West. So Chair, I'll quickly jump to the landscaping minor variances. I think the best schedule to go here is schedule B on page 27 of 48. There's an exhibit there. I want to give the committee a chance to go to the schedule. Schedule B on page, again, 34 of 48.
Yes, we're asking you.
That's, that's, that's not the page, sir. It's page 34. Page 34 of the PDF. I believe all the pages are marked there. I'm sorry, my apologies. I think schedule B, my apologies, I had the page wrong. So it's, the schedule is, schedule B on page 27 in this case, my apologies. Schedule B on page 27. So Chair, that is, if, can we see that? Can we, you see, if everybody can see that yellow area. Chair, that is what the examiner has called the front yard. All those front yard related variances, you'll see the front yard is not really a front yard. It's really the front porch. There's a, there's a porch below it, there's a second story above it. But because the front porch is resurfaced, the examiner has determined that this is now the front yard. You'll see, those are the lot boundaries because the building is built right up to the front wall. So basically, and there's a little strip beside it, which is basically a strip of the side lot because it goes all the way to the side lot line, Chair. It's basically, it's neither, neither of these areas is well-suited for soft landscaping.
You can't. Here, you're over your allotted time, so just sum up in 15 seconds.
Thank you, Chair. So again, this area respectfully is not suited for front yard landscaping. Most of the landscaping in this lot is actually done on the, to the right of that supposed front yard, and that's the city boulevard. The city boulevard is where the soft landscaping is provided. Chair, you will see that the city boulevard, as per my other schedules, has not changed the landscaping for that site plan, for that city boulevard, where the soft landscaping is provided in this neighborhood, is, has not changed since.
I'm just going to interject there because you've thrown a lot of information at us. So I just ask you to hang on if we need to get back to you. So, sir, I'm just going back to the purpose again, you're going to have to just sort of deconstruct this for me. It's to legalize and maintain a new three-story detached dwelling that contains three dwelling units currently under construction as approved by, by T-Lab. So you got T-Lab's approval for that, right?
Yes, Chair.
Yeah, and then, and that says what was constructed beyond the limits of an approved building permit. Help me here, you, you know, just on the facts, you said something about some of the walls had to be replaced and placed with new walls, but.
Yes, that's, there's, there's, my apologies, Chair.
How, how much beyond the T-Lab decision are we? Now, if I can put it that way, they gave you an approval for something, and, and it's actually been constructed, as I take it, then, beyond, beyond what the, beyond what was approved by T-Lab?
Oh, Chair, respectfully, I think I tried to explain that in the presentation, the written one.
Go over it again, okay?
So none of the walls have shifted from the T-Lab approvals. The walls are exactly in the same place as they were on the T-Lab approval and where they were on the building permit. When they, when it, the proposal refers to having them constructed beyond the building permit. It's simply that walls that were existing front walls and sidewalls that were to remain in place were so badly structurally damaged, they couldn't sustain the building. So they had to be taken down and replaced with brand-new walls in the identical same place. Nothing has shifted, no wall, no massing, nothing has gone beyond. It's simply walls that were supposed to be the old ones turned out not to be sturdy enough to hold up the building. So they had to be replaced, and there's an engineering report in there explaining that, Chair. They couldn't sustain the building, so they were replaced with newer walls, but not an inch has shifted. The building is exactly where it's supposed to be. The site plan on the boulevard is identical to what was approved at T-Lab and was reflected in the building permit, Chair. Nothing has shifted an inch. It is just that old walls and not new walls.
All right, I hear you on that. All right, members, I don't have any questions. There are three variances here. The, the third one, sir, relating to soft landscaping, the model requirement is 75% of the, of the front yard be landscaped and, and in the form of soft landscaping. And here, there's none. Now, I think you were trying to point out, but you can tell me again, about the, the front yard on this, on this property. You're saying there's, there's hardly any?
Yeah, again, that's schedule B.
Please.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just wondering through you to, are, are there any speakers in opposition? Because perhaps we should hear from them.
No, there are none.
Yes, there is, there is a speaker in opposition, so.
It was me, all right, fine, okay.
And just to assist in earlier in the chair's question, staff can also put up the order to comply violation for this property, which is in your package. But just for public record, we'll have the order to comply listed on the screen as well. But we can move to the.
Yeah, so the speaker, we just to hold on, then, we're going to go to another speaker, yeah?
Yes, so we have a speaker at 14 Crocker Avenue. Natalia, are you there?
If I am, can you hear me?
Yes, please, if you can just state your first and last name and reiterate your address for the record, please.
Okay, it's Natalia Nemogica, and I live at 14 Crocker Avenue. So I'm Mr. Hannah Brockneber.
Okay, and you're aware of this minor variance application has been made and asking for relief on, on three things. Does this application affect you? Does it impact you in any way?
You know, I just wanted to just kind of voice what we've already voiced earlier. We had another meeting in relation to the neighboring, neighboring property that, that shares the wall. Essentially, that, there are two, two things that I wanted to raise. We went through the T-Lab process, and we agreed on several items, including a tree that would be planted. So now it appears that there isn't going to be any trees, there's going to be a porch. So will a hole be drilled through the porch so that there will be a tree that was agreed through that, that decision, that settlement? That's question number one. You know, we went through that in good faith, we thought, we, we came up to, you know, an amicable settlement, an agreement. And now we see that, you know, it's, it's shifting here, there, a little bit to the right, a little bit to the left, but, you know, continuous changes. The other issue that I wanted to raise was with respect to the wall. It's not a question of whether, you know, the wall is fit for purpose or whether it needs to be changed. It's just the matter in which this construction is taking place, that, you know, it was replaced and only afterwards. that, you know, it was replaced and only afterwards, by some chance, I don't know if it was the city or it was somebody else, who kind of said, look, let's take a look at what's happening on this construction site, that that was detected. So, you know, my, my broader question and concern is, what else don't we know that's happening with this construction? If it's not detected or by, you know, the city or who's responsible for monitoring how this construction is ensuing? So those are the, the two main points. The T-Lab settlement that we reached and how they're, you know, it's already sort of null and void, as far as I can tell with the porch, and also just the matter in which the construction is proceeding in general. This is like, I think, the fourth meeting or fifth that we're having on this. So that's essentially the, you know, the thrust of my, of my concern. We're not in opposition to, to the construction, but just we, we'd like to make sure that it's happening in good faith and that, you know, all, all of the i's and t's are being crossed.
Okay, in terms of that wall, there's, was that like a common wall? Between the, between the semi?
Common wall.
Semis, yeah, okay, all right. All right, so Miss, maybe, I'll, I'll just try to be quick on this in terms of the, the variances being asked, so the rear yard setback is to be 7.5 and the new dwelling is going to be zero. Sorry, so you aware of that, does that impact you?
Um, we've seen, we've sent pictures that, that kind of indicate that other properties don't have that, but you know, you can always argue both sides, depending on how you, you know, your perspective.
Okay. Members, any questions for this speaker? Appreciate a neighbor coming out and giving her views. All right. Okay, we'll go back to the agent then, please.
Thank you, Chair. I did want to jump quickly first to clarify, Chair, you had started asking me a question about the front yards, I wanted to just, if, if you please go back to schedule B on page 28, because it came up again in, in the other comments, so, Chair, can everybody see that exhibit?
Yeah, I can, sorry, is this, I don't know, is this an exhibit to the T-Lab? What's, you're calling it schedule B?
This, this is a markup of the current site plan, Chair, this is the latest site plan filed of the Committee of Adjustment that shows the current site plan.
All right.
That yellow area identifies what's the committee, what, what the plant examiner identified as the front yard. And you can see that the supposed front yard, that block line in front of it is the front lot line. That supposed front line, front yard is whatever is beyond the front lot line. It is actually the porch. The reason there's no landscaping on it, it is the porch, Chair. There's a basement, there is a basement living space below it, there is a second story above it. That is supposedly the front porch. What I'm saying is the examiner technically called that a front yard, but this property does not really have a front yard. What you see to the right of that is the actual, where you see, where you see the deck, Chair, so, Chair, where you see the deck and the actual landscaping, that is all City Boulevard. Right? So everything to the right of that, where the actual soft landscaping provided is City Boulevard. There was no way to actually put any landscaping on the front porch, but there's landscaping provided on the Boulevard, which is why City had no objections to it. City planning merely requested some trees be planted there, Chair, because there were trees removed for the walkway. And to address the neighbor concern about there was a settlement and, and there was supposed to be trees planted and somehow now there's a deck. Chair, I want to be very clear about this again. Schedule A2, which is page 13, is the site plan from the T-Lab filing, the T-Lab filing made after the settlement. Site plan for the front landscaping on the City Boulevard, that, that, that front deck and the trees and the grass and the walkway, those are all on the City Boulevard, not on the front yard. That has not shifted whatsoever since the T-Lab settlement. I respectfully will point out that the neighbor seems to be confused about the deck, the deck was always on the T-Lab plans, that's why I filed them, Chair, for schedule two. The T-Lab plans, a site plan, including City Boulevard landscaping, that are identical to this current site plan. And again, if anybody wants to double check, there, there is a date on those plans, page 13 of 48 of the presentation is the site plan from T-Lab. I was very careful to file all the historical site plans, from the first Committee of Adjustment approval, the most recent T-Lab approval, to what was filed in front of committee today. The one deck that's existing there has always been there on the, on the approval, it was part of the settlement that the neighbor objecting signed. The site plan is the same as in the settlement signed by the objecting neighbor, that's why it was verified in a T-Lab settlement here, Chair.
Okay. I just know, just from the sketch that's, that's up in front of us on the screen, so that front area to the right, it says encroachment, and, and then it's, there's the street, Crocker Avenue. So you're saying it looks like some trees, and I don't know if there are some structures in there, and that's all on public road allowance?
That's, that's all in the City Boulevard, Chair.
City Boulevard, that's what I'm asking, yeah, okay.
And when the City Planning Department asked it for trees to be planted, they wanted trees to be planted on the Boulevard.
On the Boulevard.
So that, that interlock area, the wooden deck area, the grass area, the garbage bins were added there as per the neighbor's request, wanted enclosed garbage bins. Everything about that front, front Boulevard area has been landscaped in a way that it works for planning and it works for the neighbor, going back all the way to T-Lab, Chair. Again, this is, these variances pop up because the examiner decided to call that little yellow area a front yard.
All right, thank you, members, any, any questions for this member gentleman?
Chair, Chair.
Okay, quickly.
Chair, if I may, one last comment about the neighbors raising objections to the, the application of file a permit. Again, I explained the circumstances here was the safety of the building was the issue, and I do also recognize that work was underfired in order to comply, but I wanted to just bring one thing respectfully to the committee's attention. The principle in these situations where somebody has done and gone ahead and done some work not strict compliance with building permit, is to treat the application as if though it hasn't been built and to treat it basically on its planning merits.
Yes, good.
And as for the applicant being punished, I wanted to reassure the neighbor that when these applications are filed and somebody files after an order to comply, their committee of adjustment fee is doubled, so the process already punishes them, they're just punished in a different way. Not via the planning merits, but they're punished procedurally.
I got it, yep.
That was more for the benefit of the neighbor too, Chair, that's how I wanted to explain. I apologize, just wanted to give you that. That's all of my responses, I thank you for all the time, Chair.
Through the Chair, thank you, applicant. So we have a planning report that was received very late last night, staff can bring that up on the screen, they're just amending their previous planning report where they're adding a second condition, that the existing tree between the front main wall of the building and the sidewalk will be retained. We'll just wait a minute for staff to bring that up on the screen. You members have also had this sent to you via email. So this is the late report with the conditions from community planning. In addition, Urban Forestry has submitted two reports, one recommending denial of the application condition number five.
Condition number five.
And then, that's the standard condition when forestry is recommending denial.
Oh yes, right, when they want to refuse, yes, thank you.
And then forestry has it followed up with their supplemental advisory report where they're recommending denial of variance number two and denial of variance number three with respect to landscaping. However, should the committee approve the application, notwithstanding, Urban Forestry is recommending condition number one.
All right, so members, that is additional, so.
Chair, if I may respectfully comment, I wasn't aware of those conditions, I wasn't aware of those, that report, and when I point out respectfully, if I had been aware, I would have spoken to forestry, because there was, that report did not come to me earlier, and I would explain to them that this proposal has nothing to do with removal of any tree. There's, the, the front, the front yard variances are not in that, in this front Boulevard where the trees are, I believe, for respect.
Well, that, that may be, but Urban Forestry is asking that, that committee impose two conditions, should we approve this. Keep in mind too, that they, they also had in mind to, to refuse the application. In any event, so the imposed condition was one tree will be planted between the front main wall of the building and the sidewalk, and an existing tree between the front main, front main wall of the building and the sidewalk will be retained. So that's, that's their proposal, can you live with those as conditions?
I, I guess if, if I have to, I'm not sure which tree they're referring to though, Chair.
Oh, there, okay, well, it'll be, it'll be sorted out when the condition gets waived, I guess, or dealt with. All right, thanks, sir, so, members, any, any questions, this hasn't been easy to follow.
Just.
Yes, all right.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, just a question for the, from the staff members. We receive the, the staff report, September 17, which is on the, it's projected, and also we had September 11, which they recommend to plant three trees, so we don't, so with the new staff report, so we consider the newest one, right, not the one that we already received before in September 11, 2020.
Through the Chair, that's correct, planning has superseded the previous report, this current report is updated.
Perfect.
And we also have, as I mentioned, the Urban Forestry report, which is recommending denial of variance two and three.
And through the Chair, again, to the Secretary Treasurer, we dealt with a similar issue on another matter where a tree planting had been recommended in the Boulevard, and I think the conclusion there was we're better to impose the Urban Forestry conditions, but not the planning conditions, because planning can't, would have, in fact, have a hard time clearing these conditions, so where there is overlapping forestry and planning conditions, we should err ongoing with the forestry conditions.
Through the Chair, that is correct, the Urban Forestry Division deals directly with the trees and permitting regardless of conditions imposed by the committee or, or even another division, it's Urban Forestry who would have the final say regarding permit for trees and removal on the, on the property.
And would you agree that the conditions, the Urban Forestry conditions and the planning conditions do seem to be in a bit of a conflict, so it, we sort of need to choose one or the other for, to have a sensible.
Through the Chair, that, that is how it appears, so the members can decide how they want to proceed, having considered both sets of reports.
Thanks for your help.
So members, I'll just note, yeah, so that September 17, so it was, was the yesterday report, that's the one about the existing tree and to plant a new tree, and I think the applicant wasn't aware of those, but I think he can, he can live with that or sort that out with the committee. Now, would someone like to propose a motion with respect to 16 Crocker Avenue?
Sure, yeah, before I propose a motion, I'll just give a, a bit of context, myself and I believe Ms. Adarodi West, we're here, here in the 18 Crocker, which was the adjoining semi, those three weeks ago, and the same neighbor attended on, on that occasion, and so, the, the, and there was more discussion and an additional neighbor that appeared on that occasion as well. And it, it seems to me that the, the only thing that necessitated these two applications was this was another one of those cases where it was considered a renovation and certain variances were triggered, and that's what went all the way to T-Lab, and then during construction, there was a structural issue that required them to tear down more than 50% of an exterior wall, which made it a rebuild, which triggered new variances, and so what we're approving is identical to what was approved at T-Lab and the.
Just a few weeks ago.
Well, not T-Lab, just a few weeks ago, but the, but the adjoining property was the exact same situation, and so, you know, rarely would I say we're in a blind where we almost have to approve something, but I think this might be that case, because, you know, T-Lab has already found all of these variances to be minor, albeit considering it as a renovation rather than a reconstruction, so I'm not saying it would be impossible for us to find differently, but I think it would be a difficulty, and so, for, for those reasons, I, I think the concerns of the neighbor, I, I understand them and, but I, I don't think that the Committee of Adjustment is, the, the process to pursue ensuring that building is, is being constructed in a, in a safe manner, if there's, if there's an issue about the, the actual construction, they should call 311. So, so with that context, I just thought I would provide the context because we'd sat in on that other.
On, on 18, just a few weeks ago, committee, yes, yeah, all right, let's, let's keep the treatment consistent, I guess.
So I, so I would move to approve the subject to Urban Forestry conditions, is it one and two, or is it?
Through the Chair, it's.
Maybe September, sorry, go ahead, 17?
Through the Chair, it's just Urban Forestry condition number one.
Yeah, so that's what I would, I would move to approve it, subject to Urban Forestry condition number one, but not the planning conditions since the two, since the two staff reports conflict, I would, I would move to approve the subject to Urban Forestry condition one.
So, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, is Urban Forestry also recommend refusal to entry?
Through the Chair, Urban Forestry is, is recommending to the committee that they refuse variance number two and variance number three. However, should the committee, notwithstanding, decide to approve the application, then Urban Forestry is recommending that you impose condition number one.
Yeah, so I, I, my motion is to approve it in its entirety, subject to condition one, and again, it, it's not to say that we have to approve this, but I do think that there's a risk that if we don't approve this, there's, there's almost certainly an appeal because it's something that T-Lab has previously approved, but.
Very helpful, the two of you were on the prior committee, yeah, all right, good.
But that, but that's, but that's my motion, is to approve it, approve all the variances, but subject to Urban Forestry condition one.
All right, is there a secondary for that motion? Okay, Mr. Bissonnet? All right, all in favor?
Okay.
Okay, it was an, I'll vote her. It is unanimous, I'm Secretary Treasurer. All right, the variances with that condition have been approved for Crocker Avenue. Committee now moves to item 17, the last one on our morning agenda, and it's 390 Russell Hill Road. I'll just take a minute and call that up electronically. All right, as the purpose of the application for this property, 390 Russell Hill Road, it's to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition and a rear ground floor terrace with stairs, also to construct a new rear in-ground swimming pool with a deck, and to reconstruct the front porch and stairs. Committee has before it, plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, covering a letter from Tyler Peck as agent, private arborist report, we have a staff report from Urban Forestry, and we have a letter, we have correspondence in support from gentleman at 400 Russell Hill Road, and there are also two form letters in support by owners or occupants of 397 and 399 Russell Hill Road. Fine, in addition to the agent applicant, are there any other deputies?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent here in person, and we do not have any registered speakers to this item. However, I will just note for the record that we did receive a report from Urban Forestry, however, there's a missing box, they didn't tick off which condition applies to this application. We've, you know, sought some follow-up from Urban Forestry, but we haven't received anything yet to date from Urban Forestry clarifying their conditions. I see the, there is a arborist report submitted with this application, perhaps the agent can speak to what trees, if any, are impacted by this application as part of the presentation.
Thanks for coming in person, I wanted to give us your name and your street address, and we can start from there.
Thank you, Chair, and members, my name is Tyler Peck from WND Associates with the planners and applicants for this application. Our office is at 90 Eglington Avenue East, Suite 970.
That's fine, all right, just taking a quick look at the, so the four variances requested. So some substantial construction happening here with the two-story attachment and then a new swimming pool and deck. Would you like to give us just a brief, concise presentation? Would you like to give us just a brief, concise presentation? And you can tell us why you think these four variances are ones that merit our approval, given the well-known tests that you know.
Happy to provide a summary presentation to the committee. This application, as noted, is for the alteration of the existing two-story detached house with a new rear addition at the basement ground and second story levels. And there's an associated rear terrace. The proposal does not include any substantial alterations to the front of the existing house. As noted, on file with the committee are three letters of support from the immediately adjacent property to the north at 400, properties across the street at 397 and 399. And we further understand that the property to the south has no objection to the application. My client has met with the immediate neighbors to discuss landscaping and construction matters and will be working with them through the process. We've also been in contact with City Planning staff and they also have no objection to the application. The Urban Forestry report, my understanding of that memo is that it was indicating by the asterisks their advisory comments on the application, which we understand. And any permits as required would be filed through the Urban Forestry process as a matter of course. This proposal meets the four tests as outlined in my planning rationale. As a summary of the variances quickly, the proposed development includes the below-grade renovation and partial extension of the basement level's rear main walls. This increases the maximum building length at the below-grade level to approximately 24.5 and 23.7 meters. Above grade, the house retains the same building length and depth. These are already existing above the current zoning regulations at 19 and 20 meters. And this existing condition is consistent with the prevailing building conditions found within the neighborhood. And within this neighborhood, there are actually considerably deeper dwellings. The building length and depth below grade isn't visually distinguishable from the adjacent properties or the public realm. An appropriately and generously sized landscaped rear yard is provided, which maintains a more than adequate open space and permeable areas of over 560 square meters. The overall height, which is another variance we are seeking today of the proposed building's rear main exterior wall at 9.96 meters. This is comparable to the existing built form. It's actually been designed to match the height of the existing rear sloped roof. And this has been consistently and sensitively designed within the neighborhood context as well. It's also limited to the central portion of the proposed house, mitigating visual impacts, none from the street, but certainly from existing adjacent properties. The proposal renovates the existing building's footprint slightly in the rear to accommodate the larger basement area, along with an upgraded ground and second floor. This density is commonly found in the neighborhood and is actually only 0.03 above the existing density, proposing 0.4, whereas the bylaw permits 0.35. It's actually considerably less than some other dwellings in this area. The site plan, when reviewed alongside the surveys showing the adjacent properties, demonstrates that the proposal is thoughtfully designed. It fits into the fabric of the neighborhood and specifically works with the topography of this site, which has a rear slope. That's my summary of the application. If the committee has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Members, you have any questions of the applicant here? Yes.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Not just the question that regarding the Urban Forestry clarification, because the Urban Forestry didn't mark, so.
That's correct. My understanding when reviewing their memos, that they don't always mark the conditions. They've noted the advisory comments, which is that an applicant will need to seek tree permits if required. And we, or my client, will go through that process as necessary.
Through the Chair, staff has the memo on the screen. So the memo does indicate that no approval conditions are requested. And then the memo lists various advisory comments, as the applicant has indicated. It's just conflicting that they are calling this a consent application instead of a minor variance application. So it may or may not just be a typo, but again, that was something we were trying to clarify with forestry, because on their original memo, they usually still, even if they have an advisory memo, they usually still check off a condition box on that original form, which they haven't in this case. So that's just.
And that's, oh, that's September 11th report, then?
Yes, so.
And they said no approval condition is required.
Right, and so just through the Chair to the applicant, those advisory comments that are listed here, does this apply to your site? What they're mentioning, they speak about a stone walkway. I'm just curious if you've read this and if this does actually apply to your site. I'm just worried because it's, they're referencing a consent application. So I just want to make sure, maybe that's just a typo. But maybe if you look at this actual comments that they've made here, it can give you a clue if it is referencing.
Sure, I've printed off that exact, because they didn't impose any conditions and we agreed with that. I don't have it in my package in front of me.
Is there a healthy privately-owned white cedar tree that you're aware of on the site?
Yes, that's correct. So there is a tree along the south boundary. It's actually located within a Toronto water easement area and should be removed as part of this process. And is also required to be removed to provide construction access to the rear portion of the site. Regardless of the committee's decision, the owners will need to go through the Urban Forestry tree removal process for a privately-owned tree. It's been identified by their arborist in that regard.
So there will be only one tree in the front, correct?
This is actually in the side yard. And all trees in the front yard are proposed to be retained, either private or city-owned.
So the tree that you're removing is a private-owned?
Privately-owned in the side yard, south side yard.
Okay, thank you. Then it makes it condition number two?
Through the Chair, you could. And then if Urban Forestry has no issues, they can just easily clear that. Or you can surmise from their memo at the top, where they say they have no objections or conditions, to leave it with no conditions. It's up to the members, either route you can choose.
They're referencing a consent, which they shouldn't have done. I think, members, I think I'd recommend subject to Urban Forestry condition and then things will get, hopefully get sorted out. First, I would like to propose a motion then with respect to these four variances. How do you see them? Okay. And we have no other deputants here? Yes?
So through you, Mr. Chair, would like to put forward a motion to approve this application, that we have like four variants, two of them. My concern was length and depth, which those are below-grade level only, so there doesn't have any impact on any neighbors. So would like to put motion to approve this application subjected to the report of Urban Forestry dated September 9, 2024. Is that a?
Through the Chair, well, the report is saying they have no conditions. So do you want to add a condition? Or do you want to just tie it to the advisory or make a note for the record of the advisory conditions?
Sorry, I redraw my motion, so probably I'm not clear yet. If you put condition number two, so, or if you don't even put any condition, if they want to cut any privately-owned trees, they have to contact the.
Yes, that is correct.
So then, then maybe I don't put any condition? All right, so I, through you, Mr. Chair, I just started again. My motion will be to approve this application with no condition. Just for the report, we will say that we receive September 9, 2024. And that's my motion. And if there is any applicant mention that they will need to remove one of the privately-owned trees and to have access to the back of the property, so we'll leave it to the Urban Forestry later on. But the motion is no condition, but just that's for the note for the.
Someone, for a second, all right, motion, all right. All in favor then? Okay, sir, approved with that condition. Hopefully all the trees work out and sort themselves out. All right, all right, thank you, everyone. The morning agenda is complete. And Dr. Secretary Treasurer, maybe, what would you say?
Through the Chair, we'll reconvene for the afternoon session at 2:10 PM.
All right. Thank you very much.